Brother, okay, you're on.
I'd like to give this one.
So, thanks.
Thank you.
Yat Ei, Abeneh, shekay shet nazo shanatani no finegi. Kwaegi, iswono foni, Navajo Department of Transportation. Senator John Pencil Boardroom here, Sebinito, New Mexico, Navajo Nation. Today, Eiya, we will have the Title 26 Work Session with Navajo Nation Department of Justice. Legal Counsel Mr. Roger Bigay, who oversees the chapter unit under DOJ. Today, Tuesday, November the 25th, so it's time I'd like to call the work session to order at 9:22 a.m. And with that, I'm not going to go, I'm not going to require a roll call. So we'll go straight into invocation. So, ashigushanteta had the deexashematani no klino to our relatives that are present here in the boardroom. I'll go ahead and volunteer to provide the invocation here for the work session here this morning. So if we could just all bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning as you grant us another day of opportunity. Another wonderful day to have more memories with our families and our loved ones. And also to set the path forward for the Navajo Nation Government and all of our partners across this great nation we call United States. I'd like to thank you this morning for my colleagues and I traveling and also to our relatives here and our colleagues, employees that work for the Navajo Nation Government as they travel safely from home to work. And then again, that they are blessed to be able to fulfill their duties and responsibilities of the work, Heavenly Father. We appreciate our workforce across Navajo Nation, Lord, as we are thankful for them as they're the backbone of any operation of any department or enterprise or division, Heavenly Father. I ask that you continue to bestow grace and mercy upon each of us here and also across the Navajo Nation to our relatives that are home this morning, to our relatives that are at work. And I ask that you bring unity and one voice and one plan back to the Navajo Nation Government, Lord. I know that we are in times where there is complexity and not coming to mutual agreements or understanding, Heavenly Father. I ask that you continue to guide us in hopes that we could reunify the government between the executive and legislative branch, Heavenly Father, as we have to be the example and be the leaders for our people across this Navajo Nation. Today, as we discuss Title 26 Local Governance Act under Navajo Nation Title Code 26, we ask that with the information that is provided here will be great guidance for chapters again to uniformly operate the chapters across the Navajo Nation. And that again, we come to an agreement as to which model we will be selecting and that we will have passage of the legislation in hopes that the amendments that are being made and being proposed here will address a lot of the internal issues and some of the gray areas that are currently not within the Title Code, Heavenly Father. Again, we always ask for your guidance and everything that we do, Heavenly Father. And again, we know that with policies, they're always have that opportunity to be refined. And again, continue to protect our elders out there and our youth and all the workforce from the healthcare, our school administrators, our teachers, our law enforcement, our veterans out there, Lord. And again, to our young kids that are off reservation, continue their higher education at any higher institution out there. Protect them in hopes that they could come back to Navajo Nation one day and be the leader and lead to the Navajo Nation, Heavenly Father. Again, this is what I pray to you this morning and again, thank you for a wonderful morning and continue to bless us and continue to stay on path of what we call the Saanahai. We can have a joint, Heavenly Father. With this, I pray to you in Jesus's name. Amen. Okay, going forward to recognize guests and visiting officials. So colleagues, we do have, of course, Mr. Roger Bigay with Navajo Nation Department of Justice that will be given an overview of Title 26 Proposed Amendments. And we do have Office of the Auditor General representative here. And we have representatives from chapters and of course, we have Office of the Speaker representation here as well. And of course, colleagues and our legislative staff here. I don't going forward down to, I'm going to skip review the agenda. So I will skip review the agenda as this is a work session, colleagues. And going straight to number four, the purpose of the work session is to review the proposed amendments Title 26 Local Governance Act. Shanatani, bishieba apanosan. There was a legislation that was originally dropped, like I would say almost a year ago now to propose amendments to Title 26. But due to some concerns in regards to audit updates that were provided to this committee, I had withdrawn that particular legislation. And again, we all know colleagues that the chapters across the Navajo Nation do need some clear defined guidance when it comes to Title 26. And again, we look to our legal counsel who's been at the very focal point and being the main point of contact when it comes to these issues. Chapters would look to Department of Justice with the chapter unit to find a solution or even interpreting what is in the current law. So based off of Mr. Bigay's years and years of experience of advising chapters, we look to his recommendation on how the amendments to Title 26 would be looking and looking at two models, I believe. So, ebiyakwa egitichikwito, ashigushanatani no finegi. So going to item number five, the original intent of the LGA. Ashie eklaten linegi. So there was a presentation that was sent out last week from Peggy colleagues. And I believe that's the PowerPoint that Mr. Bigay will be presenting here this morning. So at this time, kadoshanatani, Mr. Bigay, I'd like to go ahead and yield time over to you for information sharing for the Title 26 Local Governance Act amendments. So we'll go ahead and yield the time over to you.
Sure.
Honorable Arso?
Yeah, let's know when it was, you email that.
Oh, I was just looking at it this morning.
There's one that I sent out at 4:27 yesterday. That's the Wednesday are the most current ones.
Oh, was it yesterday? Okay.
Oh, I do.
Yesterday.
I guess it was yesterday. I guess I woke up too early this morning. Thought it was since last week. Or yesterday, around about 4:00.
4:27.
4:27 p.m. So with that, I'll go ahead and yield time back over to Mr. Bigay. So just for the record, we do have Honorable Curtis Yanito that is Shanatani for being present here today. Although, Eiya, I just wanted to make that recognition on the record. So, back to you, Mr. Bigay.
Yeah, there's a button that you just press. Okay, it'll pop up red right here. Wow, it's not red yet. So press it again.
It's green down here.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah.
I guess it's on.
It's on.
Okay.
Okay, you can just can't see.
Yeah.
Yat Ei Ben. 4:27.
I hadn't shared, oh, honorable members of the RDC. I know, Delegate Yanito, that day. I don't know, it's, let me get, yeah, 24 years in this month, being the 28th of this year. He is on the 8th of this year, 1990. So, I've had the 20 years now of Navajo Nation Government. And about half of those 20 years was advising chapters. And so I can probably talk all day long about about this subject area, but I prepared a PowerPoint to organize my thoughts. Because there were some statements about two weeks ago during RDC that I realized that the last time I presented to RDC was over a year ago. And then I also presented, and that was over a year ago.
Yeah.
And so when there were some statements made, there were some statements based on the ideas that were presented over a year ago. And so I wanted to ask for a work session so we can all regroup and then get the current status and everybody is on the same page as to with the latest draft of the Local Governance Act proposals. And so, and I'm going to start with the original intent. These are in seven parts. So I'm going to start with part one with the original intent of the LGA. As everybody knows, 1927, Luke Chapter became the very first chapter by John Hunter, VIA Superintendent. And he created, started creating chapters in the Luke Agency in 1927. And by 1955, there were 86 chapters. And the Navajo Nation Council passed a resolution giving stipends. That's the very first budget appropriation for stipends in 1955. And so it was for 86 chapters. In that same resolution, they brought official recognition to 86 chapters. And that's going to be important as we discuss the day. Because in three years later, in 1958, there was that law that said, well, we have 86 chapters now, but any brand new chapters are going to have to have a thousand people existing before a new chapter can be created. So that means 86 chapters today never went through that 1,000 people requirement. So, so chapters number 87 to 110, they had, well, with the exception of Natsio, they were created because of the Navajo I guess, the decision and the land swap. And so otherwise, the other chapters were supposed to establish that thousand people threshold. So there's a lot of things that happened from the 1950s and to the 1990s. But for purposes of today, I felt like mentioning in March 1995, the Office of Navajo Government Development, they had a proposal. And it was for a home rule charter process. What that would have done was it would have allowed chapters to remain as chapters the way they are or they can file a charter process. And that charter process would allow them to exercise executive, legislative and judicial powers. So, an example is like the city of Tempe. They had their own justice courts. They had their own police force. You know, they basically have all three branches of government at the local level. And so that's what they were trying to propose back in the early 1990s, mid 90s. And our late President Hale, you know, basically sponsored that proposal and presented a version of the Local Governance Act back in 1996 or 1995 December. And he, but that proposal, Council believed that that would give way too much power to the local government. So they tabled it in 1995. And they wanted the Office of Navajo Government Development to redo the LGA. And so that's what they did from 96 to 97. And it was presented before Council in April of 1998. And that's where we get our LGA today. Now, when it was passed, if you look at Exhibit G, this is where they're talking about, you know, the home rule theory was. Um, you know, the home rule theory was, you know, chapters would have a. The legislative, executive and judicial powers at the local level. And council would have to reserve powers to the central government. And so here, it was the complete reverse. Uh they were making it very clear. That council is the governing body of the Navajo Nation and it's council's duty. To delegate powers to the chapters. So that, so this is where um the establishment clause was also amended. It was amended the same day. Um so at section one, title two. Uh the government is consists of legislative, executive, judicial branches. And political subdivisions of which are not under any branch of a central government. And so that law still is on the books today. And so um when you look further into exhibit G. It also talks about things like chapters are not programs. Um and they don't have necessarily an oversight. And so it wasn't, it's not really clear if they, if 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 council was establishing a fourth. Branch, um but you know, that's not how we actually read it today. And so but the 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 idea is there, you know, here's the establishment law saying that political subdivisions which are chapters. They're not under the central branch of the government, so. Um, it's just, uh, it it is a discussion point, I think is very interesting. Now. Illustrating the theory and application of the LGA. You start with the governing body. The governing body is delegating the powers to the chapter. And the chapter is exercising those delegated powers. And those powers, they're listed in section one oh three D and section one oh three E. And we'll cover some of those today. Um but the certification process was. That chapters, you need to develop a five management system. It needs to be uh fiscal management, records management, personnel management. Property management and procurement. You need to develop those and send that to the Auditor General. The Auditor General reviews the five amendment system, recommends that to RDC. Former formerly T C D C. And then this body then certifies the five management system. That's how chapters are delegated with these powers, alright, and if they wanted to man. Let do land management, they also have to have a certified land use plan. So what that results in here is two different types of chapters. By amendment certify and by amendment certified, well, also not certified and certified. Uh we refer these to, I prefer these to government certified and non-government certified. Uh obviously, that also means LGA certified and non-LGA certified, that those are interchangeable. Um but it basically means if are, is your five management system certified or not? Now, at section one oh three D and E, it talks about all these powers, business site. And home site leasing. Um if you're certified, you're eligible. Under the two thousand eight Business Site Leasing Management Plan, you can uh obtain Business Site Leasing Authority. Right currently, only Shanto has that right now. Uh and then, uh but if you're not LGA certified, obviously, you can't. Do those things, you're not eligible.
Yeah.
Um each as the government certified, you can acquire, sell and lease property. And so again, the negative kind of implication of that is you, if you're not certified, you can't do those things. Same with contracting for goods and services, contracting with other chapters. Uh entering into intergovernmental agreements, uh federal state funds. Even contracting between a chapter and the Navajo Nation. Uh which is important here because, you know, with the um Navajo be bank commission. Uh honorable, uh so you know, when you were proposing the M O A. This is where that hindered that. Process is the LGA saying, okay, when a chapter that's not LGA certified. With a contract of the Navajo Nation, it's only for government certified chapters, so that that hindered that and. Um along with appropriating funds, uh getting their own legal counsel. Creating a peacemaking administrative uh procedure. And then the ability to generate their own revenue, all of these things, they have to be LGA certified first. Um and then local ordinance and local ordinance is a local law. Um, you know, maybe their land use plan. Uh exercising eminent domain administering uh capital improvement project funds. Uh creating zoning ordinances based on your land use plan. Any other regulatory ordinances, if you wanted to create an alternative form of government, the AFO. Uh, you know, uh municipal forms of government, uh local taxes, local fees. Uh community bonds, uh compensating chapter officials. Um, you know, those are those um. Powers that are reserved only if your FMS is certified. So you have the differences between chapters. That had these powers and chapters that are not, that are not supposed to have these power. And I say not supposed to, but we'll see that over time, some non-government certified chapters. There's has gained some of these powers on the left side of the column there. So. Moving on to uh part two um of my presentation. Uh I want to show you that just a few things, you know, I didn't wanna cover everything. But because, you know, there are a lot of things we've done as a central government that. Uh almost violates the Navajo uh Local Governance Act. And I'm not gonna say we violated it, uh but we we certainly pushed the boundaries. Um and the very first thing that happened was five months after the LGA was passed. Council gave chapters an independent grant of authority. To handle certain um budgets. And so uh soon after this independent grant of authority was issued by council. The Budget and Finance Committee said, okay, uh trackers, this is what we meant by independent grant of authority. Uh in the meantime, while you're um while you're trying to. Come up with fiscal management plans. We're going to allow you to uh operate certain budgets. We're gonna allow you to do the P E P scholarship, local grant funds and certain stipends. And we're gonna issue these on a quarterly basis. And chapters, you need to submit reports on a quarterly basis to make sure that you're. Um uh uh spending the monies appropriately. And so that's allowable. What's this allow? What wasn't given to chapters was personnel funds that was still handled by. Uh when they're all bank claims fund and then again certain stipends. Uh so. That they, we don't, we don't do this, um you know. Non-certified chapters, they're given their entire budgets at the beginning of the budget cycle. So um but. We'll, we'll learn later why uh chapters are exercising the fiscal management system today. Alright, the next thing. Uh we kind of violated the LGA was. Giving direct local supervision to the chapter officials. Now. When T C D C. Was asked, shouldn't we give supervision back to the chapter officials? T C D C said, no. We want council delegates to remain as direct local supervisors over the community service coordinator. So in the LGA, when you look at section one thousand one B. It says elected officials are prohibited in the management and operation of the chapter administration. Alright, so. It, so the law started out with that in April of nineteen ninety eight. But then, a year later, in nineteen ninety nine. The C S C program, it merged with the Local Government Support Center. Under the Division of Community Development. Under that program, the C S C shall be directly supervised. By the designated supervising chapter official. So. That law was not amended in order to effectuate, what does it mean then? If if elected officials are prohibited in the management of the chapter administration, how can they be directly local supervisors? And so over the years, the D O J has um tried to interpret that. To allow that to happen and it's kind of like doing legal gymnastics. To try to explain uh how that can happen, but that's essentially what we've done, just so that. You know, there's no legal um problems with that. Uh so. Next. Is the sales tax funds. Um. You know, one hundred percent of those funds are distributed under the fifty fifty formula. Alright, this is to all chapters. So even if you're not LGA certified, and this was in two thousand two. And it was supposed to begin in two thousand four fiscal year. Um and there was no guidance in F Y two thousand four. If you look at the budget instructions manuals, the, you know, the old, there was no guidance as to what's allowed, disallowed, it's only. The only thing that, the only guidance we had was that chapters had to use it for infrastructure. Economic development or other governmental purposes. What does that mean, other governmental purposes? Um, you know, we didn't have guidance until fiscal year two thousand seven. In the budget instructions manual, they said, here's are the this allowed costs and here are the allowed costs. And so. Um, I think the point of this is here are by two thousand five. There are only five chapters that are government certified. So that means a hundred and five chapters don't have a fiscal policy. But they are allowed to spend sales tax money for infrastructure, economic development and other governmental purposes. Um so again, we don't have guidance until three fiscal years later. So one of the things that we did, I I believe that as a central government, is we tried to standardize the five management system. Um in order to have chapters spend the money correctly, so. Um, the very first factor to get LGA certified was Shanto. When you look at Shanto's FMS, it's very unique. They built it themselves. Um whereas the second chapter is not that's you. They had this uh FMS certified in two thousand two. Now, I don't know where this FMS came from. Um however, if you look at it today. It really resembles um the two thousand ten FMS. Uh and after not that's ill was certified, Steamboat uh made some modi- certain modifications to it, Newcom and then Tuba City. So they had that, those together uh were what was used to create. A template five management system in two thousand seven. And so the council passed legislation. And said, we're gonna amend the uh LGA and uh get chapters an option. You can create your own FMS or you can adopt this template. And and by adopting this template, it will get you certified quicker, basically. Um. Uh President signed it, uh but. As you know, when council passes a law and president signs it to the LGA. It needs fifty six chapter resolutions to approve that amendment. That's gonna happen here. So the five amendment system act, it failed. It never became law.
Look.
So here we are, uh we're still struggling with chapters without a five amendment system. What shall we do? So one of the, one of the things we thought about is issuing an attorney general opinion. The Attorney General Opinion now says, okay. You hundred and one chapters that are still not F M N certified. You're bound to follow the template for fiscal and records management. The rest, the other three management systems, you still have to follow Navajo nation laws and policy. But for fiscal, you gotta start using this template. Uh so that's how we tried to um address. Um, you know, the fact that a hundred and one chapters out of a hundred and ten are still not F M S certified. So that moves on to part three. Uh of the presentation, this is just one slide. And so we talked about the five management system at failing to receive fifty six chapter resolutions. But here are some things that happened afterwards, uh two thousand ten. Uh there's another one that had the same failure of receiving fifty six chapter resolutions and here. The idea was in two thousand ten, hey, there's, there's too many disputes. Between chapter managers and chapter officials. Using the direct local supervision idea. Let's allow chapters to hire chapter managers to a one-year contract. Let's add that to the LGA. And that got approved. That was signed by the China President, now Navajo Nation President, but. Fifty six chapters, they didn't like it, so it never became law. Also in two thousand ten. Was a effort to allow chapters to use their carryover funds. For any lawful purpose. Now, this was vetoed by the Navajo Nation President. And that veto was not overwritten. Um so that's important for our discussion today because. A lot of individuals believe that today, you know, chapters. They have a lot of money in their accounts. Yes, that's true, but all of those fun accounts are restricted. Right? You can't use your uh junk food tax and move it over to, you know. Um emergency funds because, you know, it, there's a winter storm coming in, you know, those kind of. Moving of money, it it's not allowed for carryover funds, especially carryover funds. Uh those are things that are not spent within a fiscal year and so anyway. That was vetoed, so it never became law. And so chapters, if you have uh fund accounts that continue to roll over year after year. It will look like you go have a lot of money, but you're restricted on how you're, you're using it, so. Um. So that was an attempt to try to uh give options to chapters. Uh two years later, the Local Empowerment Act proposal. Uh that went through the whole S A S process. And the proposal would have tr- tried to address a lot of the problems that. Uh DCD and Auditor General was having with chapters at that time. Um and so that was a proposal that went through the process but never got legislated. Um and so, that you know, that, that's um. Um honorable uh delegate Art Mitchell. Uh that was one of the things that he was a big proponent of at that time. So that stalled, um and then. Uh four years later, uh and I remember this because I came back to DOJ in twenty thirteen. And one of the big things that we're talking about was decentralization. Decentralization talked about murder, uh getting rid of the whole LGSC and then creating a ASC. And also um. Ziffy Jean back in two thousand eleven. That Giselle Jean region, they started uh creating their regional councils. And then other chapters, they liked that concept, and so they started submitting plans of operation for regional councils. And so those are the kind of things that was happening in the early um two thousand eleven, two thousand thirteen, fourteen. And so when there was a proposal. Um to pursue LGA limits, the regionalization. Um effort was. Was contemplated, uh there's a task force put together. I was on that task force and, you know, we put some materials together. Um and one of the things that we were trying to meet was the deadline, the deadline for that uh general election. Um and to have the, the, the regionalization question, we were gonna do that as a referendum. And instead of um preparing materials for that referendum. The idea was, let's give council a, the uh duty to um. To create that regionalization, uh let's make a simple ballot question, basically. Um and and by doing that, we can make the general twenty sixteen general election ballot. So that was a concept, um so, but that was eventually vetoed. Um because that enabling legislation idea. Um you know, I I think President Gay, former President Gay, he supported regionalization, but he didn't. Really support the enabling legislation. Uh idea, when you look at his veto message, and that's essentially what he's talking about. Um so that failed. Um and then, in in twenty nineteen, uh before the chapter unit was created. Uh there were draft amendments created by the Economic Community Development Unit of DOJ. Um along with the Auditor General's Office, the Ethics and Rules Office, and DCD. Now, that all effort also stalled, um and so. Before I talk about the the draft, uh I'm gonna move over to section four of 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 the discussion and. One of the things that um I think. Is keeps being mentioned today is regionalization. Um and so. The idea here again was, uh the maps that you see there is just the um the hundred and ten chapters on the bottom. Let that go away. And then on top of it, we're gonna create. A twenty-two, twenty-three, or twenty-four regional governments. The twenty-four regional governments idea was based on the same mapping and districting for the, for the twenty-four um council delegates. Um so. So that's essentially the idea that um, let's see, one on two. Oh, I don't know what's going on there. So there was a lot of of.
I think that's what happened.
Hello, there were, uh this, this slide is actually supposed to have a lot of regionalization benefits. Um and one of them.
It's actually, I don't know if you wanna click it again, cuz it does pull up on mine.
Okay.
There it goes.
Oh, okay.
She's going by bullets, so.
Creating economic tax base, um and because. The idea was, okay, uh let's look at White Horse State Chapter. Um you know, are they gonna be motivated to be re- uh government certified, to get tax empower? Versus, you know, what if they were part of a region and everybody shared the tax base? Um so that was a benefit they thought, um and then. Decentralization, decentralizing um some of the budgets uh programs and. Uh maybe incorporating regional offices um was also contemplated, uh improving delivery. Uh ensuring funds are utilized for fund guidelines, and the idea behind that was, you would have. Um degree professionals, we would have people like a certified public accountant. Um to handle those things, and then a regional land use plan. Um because boundaries is a, is a. Very, very sensitive hot topic that I think we're gonna run to at some point in the future. Uh and that's all I'll say about that. I'm not gonna say anything other. Uh than, you know, track of boundaries is is a, is a big issue. Um regional infrastructure projects like watershed. Um you know, those are kind of things that are more regional than uh per chapter. Um and then uh internal disputes, um you know, that. I spent a lot of time uh on this, actually. Um a lot of legal questions come in as to, is this a micromanagement? By chapter officials or, you know, uh you know, chapter officials. Or reverse, we'll say, you know, we gave a directive. Um and the chapter and administration is not doing it, uh and so there's a lot of internal disputes. And they thought, the thought was regionalization would help that, uh increase in land base. Uh for development in smaller communities, um amenities centers. Um. Could serve the existing um. Chapter buildings, um could service community centers, um. Uh addressing underserved projects because it's better to fund uh regional. Instead of per chapter. Uh addressing land disputes, um increasing opportunities uh at, by grants. As a region, instead of having a hundred and ten chapters go after maybe a, you know, an energy project. Um or solar project or something. And then. Basically trying to improve. Um the title twenty-six problems that we're having at the. At the moment, um and quorum. Quorum hasn't never gone away. It's always been an issue. Um and, you know. Is, is it time to change the quorum from the membership? To a representative form of government, like a commission, local commissioning? Um you know, because, you know, one of the uh interesting things, um. One of the interesting products that are coming up. Um that you'll see is an audit finding for. A chapter that hasn't passed their budget in six months. Um and so. And the reason why they didn't do that is because the chapter was unable to get formed or pass the budget. And so that is an example where it might benefit. To go uh for some chapters to do a representative form of government. Instead of trying to get twenty-five people to to show up for meeting and consider a budget, pass a budget resolution. Um sanction chapters, um you know, some sanction chapters, as you know, some of them are. Uh over a decade, um and. What, uh how can we address some of those things, you know, uh should we have some forfeiture? Provisions that, you know, if you didn't contribute to your um. Uh resolution of the, of your corrective action plan to get out of sanction, should you be reimbursed? Your money, or should you be forced to forfeit those because you didn't contribute to the success of the cat? Uh you know, those are some of the discussions that we were um contemplating and even amending. The Auditor General's Plan of Operation, and that was a twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen effort as well. To give more sanctioning power to address some of those um audits and, and you know. Chapters, you know, I was a chapter official in two thousand twelve, that's when I was audited. Um and then I, I never went back as a chapter official, and then two years ago. The brand new chapter officials focused on their audits, they get out of sanction, and then. Me, as a chapter official in two thousand twelve, I, I get reimbursed. You know, all of that money, even though I didn't contribute to any of that, you know, i- is that something we need to revisit? Um so that it motivates chapters to be more attentive to their um. Audits and, you know, corrective action plans, it's helpful for the discussion, um so. Those were some of the things that we were looking at. Um with regionalization and uh uh obviously Jesse Jean, they were the first regional council. And then um I think Region Eight, uh Nost. Um they started um. Regionalizing and we're thinking, okay, they're already regionalizing, let's just, um you know. Base the regionalization plan on some of those things that chapters are gonna do, are already doing. And the idea here again is, there's still gonna be a hundred and ten communities. Um but the government itself is gonna be divided into, you know, twenty-four regional governments. And each government is gonna have a regional manager. And when you go outside the nomination, there's the town manager, or you know, the, these other. Um executives um of the city or the, you know, those kind of people, you know. It was the same idea, this regional manager would be degree, would have some. Um experience in handling uh these kinds of uh managerial. Um because, you know, you have all of these. Um proposed departments and programs under the region, um there's a proposal writer. Um a grant writer, basically, um so that it's easier to. Uh for chapters to, um not chapters, their region, to um. Have some of these proposal writers um to help them in their region, uh there's a senior planner. There's a heavy equipment operator, there's a, uh there's a compliance office. To make sure that whatever the chapter is doing, it goes through the compliance officer, and they say, yes. We're doing things for the five management system. Uh we talked about the certified public accountant. Um and then the extension agent was an idea that, you know. Uh let's say, um there's something we need, um. Um some land is issued that has to be um addressed with the Division of Natural Resources, for example. This extension agent would basically be kind of that, that, that liaison. Um to, because chapters, they still are not completely. Um autonomous, they still would need. Um the guidance from the central government, so this intervention agent would, you know, be, they would be that both between. Uh maintenance person, maintenance uh at the chapter level, um for the property management aspects. Uh and then there was gonna be a chapter unit, um you know, that was proposed in twenty, twenty sixteen. Uh but it never, it never occurred. Um all of these ideas, and really, if, if, if it were up to me, we would have a hundred and ten. Um. Attorneys in the chapter unit to try to help each chapter with their individual. Um but that's not, that's not feasible, that's not cost feasible. Maybe twenty-four um attorneys, because when you look at county governments, they have their own county attorney. When you look at city governments, they have their own city attorneys, and they have city. Uh basically offices, uh multiple attorneys handling different issues. Essentially what they have is their own miniature DOJ. You know, at the local level, but chapters, they don't do that. You know, there's no attorney um sitting with them at their regular chapter meeting to handle. How many legal issues do you think they handle every single chapter meeting? Um I think there's, there's a lot, you know, there's, you know, there should be quick. Answers by attorneys to help facilitate some of the questions that they, that might come up during chapter meeting. And every day, you know, their, their contracts. Um should, when should they do a service of contract, um how did they na- navigate all those different kinds of con- construction contracts? Um their memorandums of agreement, their grant agreements, you know, all of these things are handled by Wonder Rock. By different attorneys, but at chapters, they had none, they had the chapter in it, and then we're. Trying to um. Uh uh facilitate the legal guidance by working with our other DOJ colleagues, like, for example, tax issues. I work with um the Tax and Finance Unit on chapter tax issues, because I'm not a tax attorney. Right? So, you know, those kind of things that we have to um. Try to help chapters in that way, but if it was on a regional level, instead of doing a hundred and ten, maybe it'd be better to. Help facilitate that um by, at at least at the very minimum. Have one attorney involved in each of the five agencies. And essentially, that's what I'm trying to do right now, trying to hire, you know, uh an attorney that will handle just the eastern. Cuz eastern issues, their checkerboard issues, they're way different than the western side. Um and then vice versa, western has some unique issues that you don't handle on the eastern side, so. You know, you have to have these special. Special legal, um I guess, trainings. And I'm trying to establish that because all of these issues are very unique. Um and, you know, so the proposal back then was um three attorneys at the beginning with. Uh but if, if it were, if I had a wish list, I would, you would have five attorneys. Under me to, to help uh with those unique issues in each of the agencies. Alright, so here's a proposal, um so like I said, the chapters don't go away. There's still communities, and so each of these communities would have a commissioner. Um so here, or in Benado, would have commissioner, uh Kin, Indaseki right there. Uh Sagato, Bruce Wood, um and I believe it's Steamboat there. And so they each would have a commissioner, um and they would now be, um replace. All those chapter officials. And they would make decisions at regional level. Alright, so. That's essentially, uh here's several regional uh commissioners. Uh a re- one regional manager, and like I said, all of those um administrators that to cover that entire region. Alright, so. It was a good idea. You know, but I believe it was just the packaging of the. You know, but I believe it was just the packaging of the enabling legislation. That, you know, kind of hindered the progress of that. So, one of the things that is, you know. Before regionalization was happening, we had several meetings with RDC. We, we knew that there were problems at the chapter level, that at the local level, the local governance act. It's not working, we need to do something about the LGA, you know, we were saying that. Uh before twenty sixteen. And yet, when regionalization failed, those issues didn't go away. It, you know, it just, it continued to exist. And so um one of the things that I wish we did was, I wish we had a backup plan. Um back then, and the backup plan would probably could be then uh probably be. LGA minutes, um because regionalization is chapter reform. That's con- that's complete, I mean, we're not amending the LGA with regionalization, that's. True chapter reform, we're changing the BIA system into a regionalization government idea. And so that would have been required a vote of the people and so that's why um that effort was. Was done, but maybe if we concentrated a backup plan. To work on LGA amendments in case regionalization failed. You know, but where will we be now? Um is what I always think. Um because from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty five today. We're under the same thoughts, we're still having product problems, we're still. Having internal disputes, we're still having this idea that there's a lack of transparency. Um at the local level, um and you have all of these different policies that are. In the LGA, there are RDC resolutions, there are budget finance committee resolutions. There are in all of these different areas, not all in one place. And so, you know, the chapters, they have to navigate all of those things and then. And then leadership counts on the ASC and DOJ to provide these trainings to a hundred and then. Different communities, um and what I like to do usually is when a chapter asks. Can you do a training on a five management system? Yes, I can, but please work with your ASC because I'd rather have. Multiple officials and staff have an opportunity to see that presentation rather than me. You know, doing a hundred and ten set different um trainings and so um anyway. We are uh in uh part five of this presentation and here. I wanna talk about how we're operating today, at least from the DOJ's perspective. Um how hard it is to do my jobs sometimes. Um because we still have sixty five chapters that are not LG certified, okay? So, section one oh three D two, it talks about LGA certified, if you. You have the power to acquire property, so they can purchase property. You, they can sell their property. And they can lease their property, alright? All you have to do is follow the procedures in your five management system for the property. Now, what about if you're not LGA certified? Technically, you're still under Wonder Rock. And therefore, the Naval Nation Property Management should be. Uh effective on you guys. However, I just talked about, you know, chapters being audited using the two thousand ten FMS. Um and so it creates this anomaly. Um you know, so, okay, we only have eight two thousand ten AG opinion talking about fiscal records. Doesn't say property, but yet they're audited under property, so. How do we, how do we explain that? Um and you know, and. And from the Auditor General's perspective, I mean, or from, I can understand from their standpoint. That they need some, something um to audit chapters and so I can see from their point, they need something. That applies directly to chapters and not uh apply, you can't use. Winter out policies on chapters sometimes, uh especially with um. Uh capitalized assets, um when, when do you do, uh how do you categorize non expendable, expendable, all of those things? You know, is the chapter specific under two thousand ten FMS, so. It is a good idea to use a property FMS, but. That's not what the law says, though, you know, so I don't mean to address those. Those anomalies, um it's not very clear in the law. Um and so those are some of the things that that they, my days sometimes um. I struggle, uh and then. Uh as you all know, probably is intragovernmental office space use agreements. That's been used long before I came to DOJ. Um and what that is, is that, let's say there's a chapter building within the chapter compound. And that building is gonna be used by the senior uh center of the the Dalteks. And so the Dalteks um enters into an intragovernmental office space use agreement. And they pay rental sometimes, not all the time, but sometimes when they do pay rental. And those um intragovernmental office basis agreements are executed, allowing. A non-LGA certified chapter to collect rent essentially. So, we don't call them lease agreements, right? We don't call them lease agreements because if we call them lease agreements, then. It technically violates the LGA because of section one oh three D two. Specifically says leasing chapter property, so. So we call them intragovernmental office basis agreements just to, again. Create that legal gymnastics to say that, okay, they're not really exercising this delegated power. Uh but really, if you look at it, you know, it's, it is reading that, that um. We're trying to explain why non-LGA certified chapters are able to collect rent. From Naval Nation programs. Alright, um. This is at section one oh three D three of the LGA. It says covenant certified chapters have the power to contract for goods and services. Uh obviously, they're going to certify, there's no problem, um the base of procedure vendor, you go through procurement. Uh management system, um there's no DOJ review, the vendor signs a contract into uh contracts. Present at a chapter meeting, it's approved by resolution and then the chapter president signs it. And then according to section two, uh two 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 D of title two. Alright, very straightforward process, but if you're not government certified, what is that? Well, first of all, they gotta follow the Naval Nations Prepariment Act. Um and then, per DOJ memo, not law. We set out a process to say that um your contracts. That does have to be approved by chapter resolution, but once it's approved by resolution. You have to have DCD uh initiate the one sixty four or executive review process. DCD signs off on it, DOJ signs off on it, and then goes to the Naval Nation President. Now that's, that DOJ memo is, is what fourteen, um was, it's many years old. And nobody remembers it, I think, and there's a lot of confusion. Alright, so if, if the one sixty four process is initiated and it goes over to OOC. And O and O B, O and B decide, why am I looking at this? I don't know. I don't have access to the chapter's um budgeting, so. You know, so those are kind of uh issues that we run into periodically and and I have to send an email or something to say. No, that's not the process we're supposed to use, use the, use this memo. Saying that it's only by DCD DOJ, then it goes to the President's Office. And where, where that is signed. And another confusion is normal Naval Nation contracts after the Naval Nation President signs. It goes back to the Controller's Office to get a contract number and a memo issued. That's not supposed to happen for chapter uh contracts, so sometimes even that. There's some, some confusion with that, the point here of this um slide is. There has to be two different processes and how do we? You know, do these things for non-LGA certified chapters, there's sixty five of them still today. Um and they probably are not following the DOJ. Um and so those are some of the issues that we deal with here in twenty twenty five. Here's another example, section one oh three D five, six and seven. Essentially, those sections and subsections, they talk about the a covenant certified chapter. You have the power to enter into intergovernmental agreements with the federal government. You have the power to enter into the uh contract with the Naval Nation for federal and state funds. Um and then you have the power to enter into um contracts with the Naval Nation. So, if you're LGA certified, you just need a BTO committee approval. Except, that doesn't happen either. Um you know, so that's one thing that, you know, I think people forget. That that's a requirement, um and so. That's one thing, if you're not LGA certified, then technically, you can't, you can't do these things. Uh Wonder Rock has to do it for you, DCD or if it's a water project. Uh Divisional Re- Water Resources has to do it for you, if there's a road project. Uh technically, Endoff is supposed to do it for non-LGA certified chapters, but. And you know, um you know, the Intech Grants, you know, Intech. Uh is very generous in providing grants to, you know, certain communities. And they include non-LGA certified chapters. And when you look at that process, there's a grant application, there's a essentially a grant agreement. And that's how chapters can get it. And this has been happening for years without any policing of those funds. And so, that. Onto create some concerns, you know, are we really following LGA? And do all of us, any of us, any of us in this room, do we have the guts to tell? Those chapters that you're not eligible to receive NTEC grants anymore? You know, do we reverse time to say LGA says no, therefore, no, no more? And essentially, that's what DOJ did for the senior ones over the San Juan County. Um you know, we tried to say, we tried to tell the county. We can make this work. Um go through the Division of Community Development or go through Dalteks. To have the money uh basically funnel to the chap- local chapter level using the central government. They did not wanna do that, they believed that Wonder Rock VRRC was going to take that money and use it for something else. And so they didn't wanna do that, um and so now um there is. At least a question being raised DOJ, okay? If, if county funds can go to non-LGA certified chapters. Can I sponsor legislation to waive the LGA allowed to happen? And I haven't answered that question yet, I'm trying to wait for. One of these models to go through first, um because model A will solve that. Will solve that problem, but in the interim. It's very, it's, it's a very kind of like a slippery slope, if, if council starts waiving LGA for. To allow county funds, then you're asking for, there's gonna be a lot of. Non-LGA certified chapters saying, can you waive the LGA to, for me to do this? So, you know, it's, it it's, it it, I, I feel like um. We got to choose one of the models to help facilitate and make a decision on some of these questions. Um intragovernmental agreements, uh member MOUs basically, in two thousand eleven. The Title Two was amended. And one of the things that the, that happened was it created some new definitions. Uh it created new definitions to the intergovernmental agreement, uh memorandums of. Uh agreements, MOAs and MOUs. And so there's a new definition from two thousand eleven that says. Agreements between tribal divisions, agencies, programs and non-certified chapters. Are not MOUs for purposes of the one sixty four review process. And therefore, those types of agreements can be signed. By the appropriate division director, basically. And so, when we present this, sometimes I'll present this for like the. Intergovernmental Office Basis and Paments or other types of MOUs. This is not accepted, it's not accepted, even though this law was created in two thousand eleven, okay, so. Um which adds another set of issues that, you know, are we. Are we somehow indirectly violating the LGA or are we trying to help chapters? Do some of the things um when you're not certified. Uh and do any of us have the gut to tell chapters, no. Actually, you can't enter your contracts or MOUs with Naval Nation government or Title Six. I don't know how you go backwards, you know, from two thousand eleven to now and even before that, how do you reverse time? I think that's a good question. Uh delegated power to establish fees, uh if you're LGA certified, you're supposed to go through the ordinance process. You create the ordinance, you have essentially two public hearings and then you vote. At the third chapter meeting and, you know, you post the ordinance for fourteen days. And that's how you get your new ordinance. A lot of chapters are doing this by a simple chapter resolution, you know, here's our new fee, um and so. Uh and then, and and then at the uh for non-LGA certified chapters, you know, how many of our chapters? Uh charge fees for waste, trash, uh they charge fees for water. Um you know, that's, that's, you know, a question, you know, how do they have that power? Um you know, and then obviously, um. Or as long as we can all remember, um chapters might have been charged for um burial plots. And excavation and backfill services and so. We, and I drafted those burial regulations to insert. A provision that limits those costs and fees up to a hundred fifty dollars, right, but. The point is, is that, okay, if the LGA says you have to be government certified to go through this ordinance process to charge these fees. And then we have, you know, an acknowledgement that, hey, chapters, um you can no longer. Uh charge a thousand dollars for a family burial plot, but you can charge it to a hundred fifty when you're not LGA certified. Um we're all, we're kind of meeting them in the middle, but then should we even be meeting them in the middle at all? You know, should we have required them to be LGA certified? Alright, so that's a question. So, there's a lot of questions, um you know, this is that same. Um, you know, this is that same same graph. Um that I showed you earlier saying this is how we're supposed to be operating originally under the original L G A. But then we as basically established question marks to linear these powers where. Non L G A certified chapters are, I'm exercising these powers in twenty twenty five. Right, so.
Interesting.
Moving on to supervision. Um. You know, oh, there's, we the we've handled. Or we've addressed supervision in a variety of ways, going all the way back to nineteen seventy nine and even before then. Where chapter officials, they are the supervisors, they supervise chapter staff. Obviously, that's way before L G A, um and then in nineteen ninety one. Uh, um the C S C program, it moved under the legislative branch. And so council delegates supervise the chapter C S C. And that happened, um, you know, uh. Three months before the L G A was passed. Like I said this morning. Uh, they asked P C B C, should should chapter officials supervise the C S C now? Answer no. Council delegates should remain as supervisors. And therefore, we're going to insert in the L G A that. Um, chapter elected officials are prohibited in direct involvement and management of the chapter administration. Um, however, like I said, a year later. C S C program is merged into the A L G S C program. Um, the C S C program, it moves from the legislative branch to the executive branch under D C D. Um, they adopt the whole general administrative direction at the agency level. And then direct local supervision at the local level. Uh, and so, um. One of the things that's uh also. Very interesting is this idea, um in nineteen ninety nine. The government served former government services committee, they pass a resolution saying, alright. By fiscal year two thousand one. Um, there's gonna be a regional council of local governance to oversee the L G S C. Their L G S C is gonna be phased out. These um positions um will transfer over to the chapters. And so when you read that resolution. There's this idea that. The local governance act is gonna be a complete success. All hundred and ten chapters, they're gonna want to become L G A certified. And here's the plan for it, and we're gonna phase out L G S C, there's gonna be this. Um, chapter run. Uh, uh, chapter system. Um, so. That's nineteen ninety nine, uh and and then you move forward to twenty fourteen. Where there was decentralization, L G S C moved up, moved down and A S C moved in. And I was a part of that A S C. Stuff too, and there was some big, big plant. Um, A S C is going to focus primarily. On. Governance certification. Uh F M S implementation, audits. It they were very specific, because when you look at the old L G R C. They had their hands in the cookie jar over a lot of stuff, and I think that was one of the biggest complaints. That. Um, they had so many duties and even the G L G R C, they had an audit. Uh in two thousand nine, that basically says, you're not doing all of your duties, um. And therefore, the based on that, um. Directive action plan, that's that's how they become uh came out with decent central decentralization. We need to change the system. We need to make it, make it better. Um, and so how do we make it better? Well, if we create. A minimum, uh if we did twenty four regional uh uh A S Cs, you know, at least sixteen maybe. Then, you know, we would have these professionals in there and they would be able to do. You know, different duties, uh well, similar duties, some similar duties to L G S C, but not the whole. Not the complete. Um, L G S C uh plan of operation, they would be very focused. Uh in helping chapters and we're gonna create sixteen of them at the beginning. And um one of the things that we were also gonna do was get rid of direct local supervision by chapter officials. Um. And obviously, that. Basically failed because we tried to recruit for sixteen A S Cs. We couldn't fill those positions. Uh and therefore, the funding went away. When the funding went away, sixteen A S Cs got reduced to eight that we have today. Alright, so. When that happened, there was a lot of, um. That's with regard to supervision, one of the things was, hey, A S C is not there every day. How can you supervise the C S C at the local level? Um, and so in twenty eighteen, they brought back direct local supervision. Alright, so that's how they chose to to address it. Um, and again, when that happened, it addressed the local. Uh effort to over supervision, but it created disputes again. Um, and when that happened. Uh, one of the disputes is was centered around the chapter officials not following the. The uh personnel rules. And so we did a uh a amendment to the A S C plan of operation. To say that if you're a chapter officials and you want supervision. You are required to obtain training on supervision before the A S C director. Uh delegates uh supervision to a chapter officials. And again, the idea behind that was was we're gonna, we're gonna train on the personnel management system. We're gonna teach them about progressive discipline. We're gonna talk about all of the what a disciplinary action looks like. The information that needs to go in there. Uh and what just cause is, uh so. Those are the kind of things that we thought was going to be helpful um as we move forward. And so. So, you know, the supervision part. Is something that we're trying to address in both models A and model B. Um. And so.
Mister Begay.
Yeah.
I believe Vice President Johnson has a question.
Yes.
Vice Chair.
Yeah, that last slide, we did have A S C. Before R D C of last month. In uh you had talked about this uh. Um, direct local supervision of staff. I don't know if you were on the call. At that time. Um, um what was presented to R D C and. From the A S C manager, Jerome Charlie.
Jerome Charlie.
Ron Charlie. Said that, uh. All the chapter needs to officially to do is just send them a memo and they're in charge. Didn't say anything about no training or. Um. Anything like that, so but. And then I know it shared there's. Had a concern about that because. I guess he had to go through a resolution process. From the community and give that direct supervision to the chapter officials. So I just wanted to get some clarification on that part, um. Since you are mentioning the support services, which is A S C.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for that question. So it is within the plan of operation, it's very clear. Um, that the A S C director, uh Jerome Charlie. He's the ultimate supervisor for all of the community service coordinators, that's what it says. Jerome Charlie has the power to delegate the supervisor. Of duties. He can delegate that to the. A S C senior program project specialist within that region. Or. He can delegate supervision to a chapter official who has received training. That's very clearly stated in the plan of operation. You know, if if they wanna amend their plan of operation and say something different, that's fine, you know, that's up to this body to. To help um process those. Um, but for the time being, that's that's very clearly expressed. In the. Uh. A S C kind of operation. Alright, so. That's.
Uh Vice Chair, did that clarify your question?
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess that's just an area that we need to clarify with Mister Jerome Charlie. I know I did hear that officials had to go through that particular training several. Maybe even like a year ago or something.
Yeah, we had a, uh, when this was first implemented, we actually had a training over at Twin Arrows. And that was a bit, you know, we did the whole entire room and filled up with, you know, tractor officials who wanted to become. Supervisors and we had, um. Uh, all of A S L. A S C there, uh we have D P M there. Um, and we had the D O J litigation unit there, obviously, I was there. And so we had presentations on different aspects of the personnel management system. So that's the, it was very comprehensive at that point, I mean, at that time, but we haven't, uh. Did a, we haven't done another similar type of training um on personal management.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, moving on to section six of today's presentation. Um, is, you know, taking all the information that I've given. This morning, um what is a plan, what can we do? And I have this slide here, um. I I go to, uh, you know, uh. Meetings with attorneys and one of the things was artificial intelligence, they keep saying and. They keep saying, they keep scaring us, you know. These people, these this A I is gonna replace all the attorneys. We don't, you know, you're not gonna need an attorney no more, so. Here's my uh slide showing the, you know, how my position's gonna be replaced than D O J. So, so it's a little humor. Alright, so brief history of this of these tournaments, uh back in twenty nineteen. Um, when L G been uh the uh E C D U. They. Uh created a draft. Uh and it was mostly minor amendments, capital up, capitalizing a letter here. Use it, put in a comma here. For the most part, it was mostly, um. Grammatical, but there were some um concepts, um. In that draft, again, that draft was by D O J, Attorney General, Ethics and Rules and D C D. And so what I did was I took that draft. And then I looked at the two thousand twelve local empowerment. And I started inco- incorporating concepts from that. That act, that act proposal. Um, and then I started incorporating concepts from the twenty sixteen regionalization effort. Uh, and then on top of that, obviously, I've been, you know, almost half of my career. Here on that whole has been with chapters, so through, I don't know how many D O J memos I've issued. Um, how much guidance I give to chapters on a daily basis. There's a lot of things that has happened over the years, and so through that experience and research. I thought about ideas as to what should go into the new L G A. Um, as part of amendments. So with all of that. Two years ago, uh I started presenting on four models. Uh, and so the first model was, let's just certify the remaining chapters. We're treating them like L G A certified chapters anyway. Um, we, that would eliminate the. You're not L G A certified and therefore this is your rule, you know, kind of thing. Treating them differently, basically, um and then. And then under model one, we would just officially recognize officials to supervise. So under section one thousand one E, where it says elected officials are prohibited in the management operation of the chapter administration. We would amend that and say, except otherwise, um when delegated as. Uh direct local supervisor, so we just add minor amendments something at that to address. Um, how official. Those could supervise in twenty twenty five. Alright, so that was model one, model two was, okay, let's, if we want to keep. The L G A certification system and allow only allows the sixty five. To uh continue as non L G A certified. What if we delegated minor powers to those chapters? Minor powers like. Uh, the ability to contract up to a ten thousand dollars, you know. So that they don't have to go through the executive review process. Uh, and most um chapter contracts are essentially under ten thousand dollars anyway. And so if chapters uh wanted to. Uh, contract for more than ten thousand, then they would still have to go through that process and. If they really wanted to contract more than ten thousand. Then maybe they should work towards L G A certification. Uh, so that was the idea, um it was, so there was uh imposing fees up to a hundred fifty dollars. There was um leasing. Uh, up to a value of ten thousand dollars, so it would allow for those. Intergovernmental office base use agreements. So, so, so those non government certified chapters, they wanna have full. Section one oh three powers, but they would have minor. Relatively minor section one oh three power, so that was section or model two. And on top of that, similar to model one, the chapter officials would be allowed to. Model three, uh again, was let's just certify everybody and then. For supervision, let's take it out of the chapter officials' hands and appoint. Start appointing those managers, those state executives. Uh, because it's the state executive under A F O, they're appointed anyway. Um, so, you know, let's just adopt the A F O type of system and then, you know, just. Uh, because we've never done that before, other than the only thing. Well, did I that slide where I went from seven nineteen seventy nine to now, how we've done, built with supervision? The one way we haven't done dealt with supervision is appointment. Uh, so similar to how we, um, how the president here, um. Recommends and then the council of uh points. Confirms uh division directors, we would bring that same idea to the local level under model three. And allow the chapter president to essentially appoint someone and then they're confirmed by a chapter resolution. That was, uh, and they would be an at-will employee, uh and they would serve. Um, they could be removed without just cause, essentially. Uh, and you know, so that was going to be an option, a way that local partner. Could. I guess deal with uh these supervision issues at the local level. Uh, and so that was basically model three. Models four. Again, was let's, let's stay with the L G A certification process. Uh, supervision would depend on your certification status. If you're L G A certified, uh it's like model three, you appoint your tractor executive. And under, uh, if you're not L G A certified, then the A S C. And under, uh if you're not L G A certified, then the A S C. Uh current operation, whether A S C is the supervisor, ultimate supervisor, and that would remain place, so that was Model Four. So most of everybody remembers these four models. However, in early twenty twenty five, um you know, we've started. Um or actually late twenty twenty four, and this was based on um the, the initial. Sponsorship of legislation uh by Chair Jesus, where we merged Models One and Three. So, and that created Model Eight, um and that's what was initially dropped. That included regionalization, um allowing uh chapters to regionalize on their own. Um and so that was initially dropped in in December of twenty twenty four, but then. It was withdrawn in January of this year. And then after we had the meetings and discussions um about, you know. What, maybe we should merge Models Two and Four to give a different option. So that's how we created Model B. Uh and uh along the way, under Model A, regionalization was completely drawn. And the reason um we did that was, I think, regionalization was, was very um. It could have been very uh controversial. Uh on how we did those things, and so maybe we, if we just add regionalization in the future. Was the idea that we just dropped it from Model Eight. So today, there's only two models. There's no more four models, they're, they've been merged into two models, alright, so. Here's uh an example of the language changes between the two models, alright, so. And these are the structural changes that I talked about, um. So under the current L G A, it talks about that process. Uh chapters, you create an F M S, Auditor General reviews, and then R T C approves the F M S and voila, your. L G A certifier, that's a current L G A. But under Model A. All, all hundred ten chapters would already be L G A certified. So the amendment would basically say that. Chapters, if you want to amend your five mandate system. You have to go through this process. First, you gotta draft your traps of resolution saying you want an amendment. And you gotta attach a, an exhibit to your resolution, showing underlying strikeouts. Where you're adding and deleting language to your five amendment system. And your proposed amendment has to be sent over to the Auditor General's office for review. Because the Auditor General's office reviewed the five mandate system from two thousand ten and they said that's good. And therefore, any change, it makes sense to say their office should review changes. To that two thousand ten F M S. And so upon a favorable review, then it comes to this body and uh you. Uh no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, after Auditor General's review, then the chapter initiates those ordinance procedures. Under two thousand one eight, so they would present the underlying strikeouts written in Navajo English. At two consecutive chapter meetings, post that, those changes for fourteen days and then vote on it. Uh at a third chapter meeting, so that the people know what changes they're agreeing to in the F M S. So it's kind of similar to the process, uh current process to get F M S certified to begin with. Um so that's the proposal under Model Eight, again, they're already. L G A certified, and if they wanna make amendments, they need to follow this process. Under the current L G A, there's nothing anywhere that talks about how chapters can amend their five amendment system. So that's why under Auto A, I felt like we need a process, it needs to be clear, and maybe we should, this is an idea proposal. Under Model B. Since, since we're gonna keep, under Model B, we keep the, the non-L G A certified chapters. We still have that in place, so. Uh the difference here is that we're going to essentially force. Chapters to adopt the two thousand ten or the, the, the brand new five management system that we're trying to work on. Um adopt the new F M S uh as it is today, so. What that would do basically is it would allow. Uh Auditor General and others to use a template to say, yes. You're not certified yet, but you're still mandated to follow these because. You had initiated process to create your own five amendment system. This is very different from two thousand seven, the Five Amendment System Act of two thousand seven. In two thousand seven, we were asking the chapters to do that. In Model B, we're forcing chapters, you know, it's what, twenty seven? You know, L G A is twenty seven years old. Um they've had enough time to develop their F M S. They're not doing it, so we're gonna force the F M S template onto the non-L G A certified chapters. Uh and that doesn't allow them to uh exercise section one oh three D and B. But it will allow them to exercise section one oh three A's. And again, under one oh three A, we're gonna do that in the next slide, and you'll see. Some ideas of what non-L G A certified chapters can do. Um and then we're going to create, uh if you're L G A certified, we're gonna allow a decertification process. And that's going to be developed um by this body, um and when that happens. You're gonna return back to a non-government certified uh status, which. You know, I, I thought about this a lot, I feel like, okay, how would that apply to something like to the city? You already have taxing power. You already have an A F O. How do you tell to a city, you're now decertified? And now, how do you, how do you implement that? Uh it's, it's a, it's not a question I can answer today, but it's just, the concept is, it just opens a door for. That and we would have to address that at some point. But, you know, uh being on sanction for more than a few years might be certified. A chapter, for example, um and so we would really need to think about. How to implement that decertification process, but that is Model B um under section one oh two. Moving on to Model uh one oh three, section one oh three currently. Uh it just says simply, um chapter members, you oversee the delegated power to the chapter. However, um yes, that was true in nineteen ninety eight, but with the development of A F O's. Uh and, you know, municipal forms of government, which are representative forms of government, that no longer makes sense. Um so, uh so under Model A, uh it's just gonna say, yes. Ordinarily, chapter members, you're the oversight, except. When that oversight has been delegated to an A F O or municipal form of government. So it's a minor amendment, but it, it, it just um bring us back into place because in nineteen ninety eight, nobody was in A F O. We didn't know how A F O's operated, but now in twenty twenty five, we know how A F O's operate now, so. We have to amend that under Model A. Under Model B. This is what I'm talking about, this is the, the big thing, oh, thank you very much. The uh section one oh three, um here's what, if you're not L G A certified. Here are the minor powers you get, you get to acquire, sell lease property with a value of ten thousand dollars or less. So they will have capitalized assets, they will have the ability to do all of the property management. Aspects of the F M S. Um except for those valued over ten thousand dollars, um so, um. So we would still need to incorporate central government for anything um exceeding that amount. Uh but most things, I feel like most things are valued ten thousand or less at the local level. So uh would, again, would at least get us, all of us in compliance with the law, uh well, I mean, yeah. With amendments will be um in compliance with the law. Uh number two, like I said earlier, uh non-L G certified chapters, you can enter into contracts. Uh for ten thousand or less, at the central level, we call this micro purchases. You know, they only need one quote, um and um so at the local level. This would be a relatively minor power, um and right now, I'm working on uh amendments to the procurement management system. And I'm going to incorporate micro purchases, um so. Uh so this would coincide with that effort. Uh entering into agreements with other chapters, this is big, I feel like, um watershed agreements. Um any of, of those um agreements that would um facilitate. Um I guess the, the emergency, like emergency management plans, um sharing of governmental resources. You know, those kind of agreements that um make sense, all chapters should be able to. To enter an agreement with other chapters, you know, they shouldn't be restricted just because they're not L G A certified. Um it just seems like a basic power, it makes sense, it would um open doors, basically. Uh and then, number four, applying for and receiving grants from non-nation enterprises in tech. That's what I was talking about earlier, this would open the door, whether, whether you're Model A or Model B, this would open that door. Um for integrity, it would, and it's all the Samont County. Um idea, but at least would have addressed the, the intent. Appropriated funds uh according to conditions um set forth by Navajo Nation. Um essentially, they're doing this anyway. Um and so, you know, we just need to recognize that this isn't an exclusive. Now, uh not government certified power, it's not exclusive to them, we're just recognizing that they're able to do this as well. And obviously imposing fees, that's, we have to recognize how chapters. That are not L G A certified, they're imposing fees, that's just, it give them the ability to do that, but um. Uh create a limit uh of a hundred fifty, and that was just based on the burial regulations, alright, so. And so that's uh one, one set of structures, another set of structure was a supervision aspect of it. And here, the current L G A, it does say chapter officials are braided in the management operation of the chapter administration. Uh I already went through that um history already, uh and under Model A. Uh which is in the middle there, uh got cut off up there on the top, but under Model A. Uh the chapter, whether by resolution or referendum, they determine. How supervision of the chapter executive is going to be. Uh oh, and let me uh stop here and say. We're using the word chapter executive because back in nineteen ninety eight, all we knew was the word chapter manager. But over time, there's the state executive, the chapter executive could. Title could be the president under the A F O of the President Council system. So instead of saying chapter manager, chapter manager, chapter manager, I replaced all of that and said chapter executive. So the chapter executive is just, the chap can be the chapter manager, that's the state executive. Can be the president under that certain A F O, or whatever you wanted to call them, um is the chapter executive. So anyway, the track, the supervision of the, of that chapter executive, it can be by community, like I said. And here's, here's the process the president recommends. Um and then the um community confirms, basically, by a chapter resolution. Um and that is executive, so serves the pleasure of the chapter membership, can be removed without just cause. By majority vote at a regular meeting or a special chapter meeting. That's option one, option two is the chapter community can decide, okay. Uh we're gonna allow one of the chapter officials to supervise, um and so here. If, if that uh happens, then the chapter executive essentially is an employee subject. To the chapter five management system for personnel, all disciplinary actions. Um has to be reviewed by legal counsel. Um and, you know, today, one of the things that I struggle with sometimes is. You know, there's, there's nothing in writing anywhere that says DOJ has to review your disciplinary action. So when it gets issued, that sometimes creates a problem, and there's nothing anywhere written to say. Rob the gate has to use it, uh or, or has to review it. There's nothing that says I, I have to do that, but if we put it in the law, then they would be required. And this isn't just to, you know, not, it's not a sense of distrust, it's just to eliminate chapter liability. Um or, or, or try to address chapter liability when disciplinary actions are issued. That might not comply with the personal management system, so um. And then the other thing uh is number three, notwithstanding the above, the chapter adopting an A F O, municipal form of government. They can address alternative ways to address supervision and, and. So an example is um Shanto, um Shanto is under an A F O. They have this system where the A F O government is that, is collectively. Is the supervisor over their chapter manager. So any personnel actions has to be decided as a group. It, it's not, it's not in one chapter official, and so that's what number three is talking about. There are A F O's like that, and so we're just specifically acknowledging that there's a different way. Of acknowledging supervision at the local level. So that's Model Eight, alright, Model B is basically almost the same thing, except. If you're not L G A certified, by, again, Jerome Charlie is the ultimate supervisor. And he can uh delegate supervision to the A S C S D P S or. An elected official who's has went through that supervisor training, just as they do today. So those, that's the difference between Model A and Model B. And without all that language, here's kind of like a snapshot of what those structural changes look like. Under Models A, Model B, and so. Moving on, so those are the, basically, the structural changes. That's the, that's the major difference between those two. Otherwise, there's a lot of things in both drafts, and both drafts are the same thing. There had the same additions, um anti-bullying. Uh uh we look, uh I had a um, a former um. Law student intern do legal research as to how other jurisdictions. Do legal research as to how other jurisdictions deal with. Um bullying by elected official, local elected officials, so. We tried to incorporate that uh in the LGA saying there's no, it's anti bullying. Um and so. You know, I deal with would be developing regulations to. Uh help clarify what those are um and like combat some of those things. Um reallocating the funds. It would be re-added. Did you know, back in nineteen ninety eight? Chapters had the ability to reallocate funds. And then they took it away, council uh Winter Rock took it away in two thousand four. And so. Again, it would address this idea that, okay, chapters, you have a lot of money. But then the people don't know. All those fun accounts are restricted funds. You can't move that money around, you can't, you can't, you know, so your balances just continues to go up, 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 up and then. And then everybody believes, hey, you're. Your overall balance is just a lot, why can't we spend some of that money? Well, because chapters can't reallocate funds, that's why they can't move money around. Um what if they were able to move some some of those funds around for for lawful purposes? You know, so. Uh that would be my recommendation to re-add that. It's not, it's not even adding, it's it's re-adding something that they they used to have. Um and then uh. Especially now winter, you know, I bet council is gonna be talking about um, you know. Giving funds to chapters to beef up their their, you know, their their emergency funds. You know, what if they reallocated funds and said, hey, we we can use some of our left care carryover money. Uh and use it for our emergency, you know, that's that's the idea um. Amending the FMS by ordinance, I talked about that already. Uh um uh acknowledging the nineteen eighty six power for allowing chapters to create nonprofit operations. Uh that's already happening, you know, it 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 happens behind. My back, uh you know, I'll I'll just get a legal question, you know, can what can I do with my local? Corporation, I'm like. When did you create this local corporation, you know, so? Let's just acknowledge that, yes, you can do it in nineteen eighty six, since nineteen eighty six you can do that and. And we'll just incorporate that. And it's specific to nonprofit corporations. We're still limiting for-profit corporations, we're still not allowing that to happen. Um because they're government. You know, uh so that's. But again, I I can, we can incorporate. For-profit corporations want to, but I think that would be an amendment to Title Five under the nomination Corporation Code. Alright, and uh next elected officials, um you know, the the section one thousand one. Uh B. One, two, and three, they talk about the president, vice president. And Secretary Treasurer duties. What about other duty, what about the A fogs, what about the commissioners, the additional commissioners that happen? They need um their duties. To also be expressed in the LGA, so we created a section one thousand one. Be four to talk about A fog officials. And some of the things we've added um is, you know, there are some chapters that have spouses and relative. Immediate relatives who are chapter officials and they all get along great and but sometimes that creates conflicts of interest. They may not know they're entering a conflict of interest. Should we just outlaw that? Should we just prohibit that from happening? Um because more often, I'm saying is there, this creates. Animosity, this they it creates. It's this idea that there's a lack of transparency because the spouses are agreeing. Um you know, uh on one side. Then the other, uh so. That's question, do we prohibit it uh or not? Uh but right now the draft says it's prohibited. Um and then another one is appointing a sergeant of arms at the local level. Uh allowing chapter presence to do that. Uh there are, there's a provision that says, you know, um um. Chapter officials, you are, you are not honest. Uh kept it. You know, that's how you um are supposed to. Uh I guess the exercise your duties and powers and um and so. One of the things that. I think I'm beginning to see more and more is domestic abuse. Uh protection orders. Being issued. Um so for example, let's say the president and vice president has. Restraing orders against one another. Well, how do they conduct a chapter meeting if they have to be five hundred feet apart? Um same with the staff, let's say your chapter manager has a restraining order against the chapter president. Uh and how do you conduct chapter business when you have to be five hundred feet apart? And you know. That that it's not sometime not feasible um and. So so there, so we inserted a general rule. Generally, there's no domestic abuse protection orders unless. There was a physical. Uh threat of harm or physical action where. That would require a protection order, so we're not taking away protection orders completely. But when you're just running to the court for protection orders and it just disrupts the traffic government. That's not ideal and it makes my job harder as a an attorney trying to advise in those scenarios. Um duty to certify, you know, Title Two, the speaker has a duty to certify under a certain time period. At the chapter level, there's no nothing written anywhere that says they have to certify the resolutions. So let's insert that back in because that was. Expressed back in nineteen seventies. But and we're just re-inserting that back that they have a duty to certify. And when you read that duty to certify provision, some chapter officials um might say, well, I don't, I. I think I think this resolution is illegal, why should I sign? Well, in the in the amendments, what it will say is you still have a duty to certify that the resolution was considered and passed on that certain day. You have a duty to that, but. You have an option, if you disagree with the resolution, if you feel um um illegal. You can contact DOJ or your attorney. To um to review that that resolution, so so it gives them at least an option. That yes, you have a duty to certify, but then if you have a problem with it. You know, send it for legal review and we can do that and I've. I've invalidated several resolutions because they were illegal, I did that by memo. Um but not all chapters do that, they just say, I'm not certifying it because I I disagree. Alright, and then uh disciplinary actions, we talked talked about that already, they'll be under um legal review. Um and then the and then for A fogs that have up to nine legislative. Um. Uh officials. Uh you know, the nation would only pay for three of. You know, that's what we do at the central level, we budget for three officials, but some chapters, if they want more officials, then it's on their dime. And that makes it very clear, because right now that is not very.
Mr. B A, um there's a question, my honorable Chair Johnson.
Yes.
On the elected officials. What I uh. Went to uh. I guess. Noticing the chapters was the. The functionality of the vice president. Of the chapters. I don't. I don't think. We need a chapter vice president, think we just need a vice president and. The secretary treasurer. Uh I was just. That's something that I've been contemplating now. Thank you.
Uh thank you, appreciate that comment, um so the comment basically was. That, you know, what what is the purpose or is there, should be there be a purpose for keeping a vice president? Now I think that's a question certainly that we can discuss further, but. Um in the vice president duties, I do make some clarifications, that's on the right side as to what. The vice president is and what their duties are. Um and added duties. Um so we'll get to that and and certainly if we. Uh can we can still discuss uh whether to get um to propose the elimination of the vice president position, you know, so. There are some benefits to giving them fresh private position. Uh so we'll cover that here uh when I get to the right side of this. Alright, um one of the things, uh the other thing that that that's not really clear is who posted a draft agenda. Who drafts the resolutions? Um and here. Uh we're making it very clear that it's the Secretary Director. Is due to do that. And they gotta do it forty-eight hours per hour to the meeting so that the community knows what they look like. At the council level, you guys enter legislation and give a five-day comment period, you know, so that everybody knows. What's can the language of the the legislation? At the chapter level, there's no such process, so you know, sometimes, you know, I go to a chapter. Meeting and there's, you know, the there's no, either there's no draft or they get the draft as soon as they're contemplating it. And then they're expected to vote on it. You know, so here, this would make it very clear that at least forty-eight hours. Part of the meeting that they would. Need to have those drafts ready and available, so that gives the community a chance to review that. And if they suggest. And then as to it, they can at least do that when the meeting comes. Uh also, there's nothing saying that the chapter secretary treasurer uh does this, what council does, where it. Reads the resolution. Prior to the vote. You know, which changes have really been made, I'll I'll um. Listen to uh chapter meeting or I'll read. Chapter meeting minutes where there's all these suggestions. But there's no vote, there's no motion, there's no second. Uh and then there's no vote to amend the resolution. Everybody just assumes that all the suggestions are gonna go in the final. Without, you know, so. Is that the right process? That's why I created chapter meeting rules of order um.
Uh Honorable Chair, so um. Use the other one.
House voice.
Use the other one to see.
I I I um. I see that um at chapter meetings. Um. Amendments. I actually seen one where. Amendment was incorporated, but there was no motion, second, no vote. And uh this brings the legality of of that particular legislation and that in your ear. Earlier earlier thought or 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 your earlier um um um. Talking about. And and the attorney positions. And um you know, they are in in a lot of uh legality issues. At the local level, now we say who is giving them legal guidance? When a legal question is asked at the chapter meeting or pertaining, if any. Questions are arise based off of contracts, the other is um the document, you know, the um. Chapter resolutions. Maybe a sort of like how we have legislative um 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 legislation process. And how it's it's, you know, posted in five-day common period and things like that. And this is like last minute resolution will come will come in, just like agency council meeting, last minute resolution when the. Resolution was um adopted, someone coming with the business, can I can I amend the agenda, add this resolution? Not having supportive documents, but again, you know, some sort of um um. A less a a resolution process so that, you know, it it keeps the people aware of their communities of. What uh chapter resolutions are in play are are being are going to be coming forward to the um. To the um chapter, I mean, so uh that's just that is some a uh chapter resolution um. Process so that, you know, it gets on to uh people are well informed at times, people say a resolution was was passed, I didn't know. Then the other is that um maybe. Um I I I'm not be sure if that's a um a type of process amendment. But the lapse. When the. At the end of the year, they you they don't use their monies. The money is that's that's not the utilize instead of just sitting there um, I I call it horrid monies. Um but if it can lapse back into the trust fund. Because that that. Would would if they carry it over and it's sitting over here, it's in a a a bank account that may be only. Earning three percent interest or maybe less, I don't know, but. If you let it lapse to go back into the trust fund, you have that money um, you know, working. That next uh that year until, you know, it's it it'll create more dollars in in the trust fund. So that the next fiscal year, you know, the chapter allocation, you know, be hired, but. Again, at times, um you know, if they don't u utilize all their monies uh for a certain purpose, you know, uh. Somewhere we need to start 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 doing that, um maybe um that will uh allow them to start planning. To utilize those dollars that these line items are um. Are 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 were put in place for them. And it's not, you know, um they're supposed to be utilizing, you know, um like one, I seen. Um a line item that's just been growing, growing, growing and. And I thought, why isn't it the chapter not working to expend these dollars in that fiscal year? So that's all.
Alright, thank you for those suggestions, um okay, so. The uh with regards to the uh whole motion practice. You know, we uh successfully uh completed the. Template rules of order. Uh we're not mandating that uh for all chapters, it's kind of like an option, here's a here's a DOJ. Approve rules of order that you can uh use at the local level. That and and we've also started trainings on those rules of order. And you know, just to show chapters, you know, here's how. You can uh, you know, do a consent agenda, you know, and this is how you give public notice of these things. Um at the local level. Um so, you know, I I feel like, you know, educating chapters about how to properly amend. Your resolutions with the proper motion, second and vote. Uh once you start educating chapters about those things, I feel like, you know, we'll get better in time. But under section one thousand. Uh three. C. Letter C. It says chapters may adopt. A uh standardized rules of order for their chapter meetings, that's what it says. That's that's before. Uh the local ordinance act was enacted, so again, for twenty-seven years at least. Chapters had the opportunity to. Uh adopt rules of order, everybody believes the Roberts rules of order applies, it does not. Um and you don't wanna use the Roberts rules of order because you don't have assemblies and committees. Um you know, you really need a chapter focused rules of order. And that's what um the chapter unit created, uh this year, we emailed it. As options to a hundred and ten chapters, we told them if you uh adopt it. Um you can uh do it at a regular chapter meeting. Or if you wanna make modifications to it, you can submit it uh to through IQ to have it uh your changes reviewed. And then you can present. At your regular chapter meeting, but the idea again is just to educate what the legislative process. Um should be at local level so that you're not fumbling trying to. Um, should be at local level so that you're not fumbling trying to interpret the Roberts Rules of Order. Um, there's a Mason's Rules of Order, there's a parliamentary rules of, there's all these rules of order out there in the world. Uh, but you need something that's chapter-focused and that's something we created. And then with regards to your second comment about laps, um, I alluded to it this morning. In two thousand four. When chapters gained, lost the ability to reallocate funds. They lost. Uh, or they gained the ability to not have chapters lapse funds, so it was a trade-off. You know, your funds will not lapse, but you can no longer have um the ability to reallocate funds, that was in two thousand four. So the chapters uh approved it by fifty-six chapter resolutions. And when that happened, it was an amendment to Title twelve, so, oh, I think it's section eight twenty. Oh, uh, that talks about um the lapse, um, that chapter funds do not lapse at the end of. Of the fiscal year, so if that proposal was going to be suggested with these efforts, then we would need to. Also amend Title twelve um kind of in order to do that, but it's certainly something we can discuss, right? So the next point talks about stipends, one thing that our law doesn't say is what do you need? To provide in order to um justify a stipend. So, in the law, we're going to make it very clear, you got to produce your sign-in sheet, you got to produce your finalized agenda. Um, you need to uh provide um, you know, resolutions that can certify by the officials. You need to submit the copy of your meeting minutes, uh, and also your audio recording. All chapters since nineteen ninety-eight. Have been required to record their meetings on a tape recording machines, obviously tape recorder machines is old, but. Now today, there's still supposed to be recording their um meetings. And I've been trying to um tell chapters, meeting minutes is not word for word. You know, that should be that for your audio recording, your meeting minutes just um. Uh, notate what the action patterns were, you know, who raised a motion? Who raised a point of order, you know, how was, how did the president um? Uh, rule on that um rule point of order or question of privilege and all of those things. Those what are is what goes into meeting minutes, it's not supposed to be fifty-page documents saying this is what we said and because. When you go to the next chapter meeting, somebody's going to say, no, that's not what I said, this meeting minutes is is incorrect. You know, it eliminates that. Where meeting minutes just talks about what were the action items? What was the motion, what was the most amended? And all of those um votes that were um taken during the me- the meeting, so. Uh, again, I think those are things that we can clear, help clarify further, but. Uh, if we had a law saying all five of these things are required before you cite them. Maybe it would motivate chapters to submit all of these things at the same time. Because, you know, there are some, you know, there's some horror stories. About, hey, our secretary treasurer hasn't submitted meeting minutes for the for eight months now. You know, uh, are you giving paid stipends? Yes. Okay, maybe you should stop issuing stipends. Uh, and get the meeting minutes first, uh, but there's no law. There's no law consequences for failures of meeting minutes. Uh, but they will get audit findings for those things, uh, and so. You know, we should put it in the law to make it very clear, these five thing things are required before stipends can be issued. Alright, and then next, um, like I said earlier, we talked about the template rules of order that we created. Those are options, it's not mandated. Um, however, um, through these LGA amendments. I'm going to propose that we mandate the DOJ rules of order, you know, uh, so that. It's something they've tool that they can use because they haven't developed their own rules of order. And then the new, the last addition is, oh, did you have a question? Oh, okay, the last addition is the agency councils. As you know. Titles one through twenty-six. Has not, does not mention agents councils, alright, so. By through these amendments, it would give a home. To agency councils, you know, they're kind of primarily consist uh of chapter officials anyway. So it makes sense to put them under Title twenty-six. So under set new sections three thousand one, which is chapter three of the Title twenty-six, it. Where that's where agency councils would have had a new law officially recognizing them. And then those um. Language is taken from the latest Eastern National Agency Council. Plan of operation that this body uh approved earlier this year. So it's it's something, it's it's moving forward, it's moving, you know, in in the future. Um, so that other agency councils will. Uh, probably soon follow um and ha- gain those benefits of what the current East Eastern Agency. Now the agency council is is concentrating. Alright, moving on over to the right side, uh, there's the executive manager. Um, you know, incorporating all of those things, uh, and. It's basically, again, um, it's not just manager, manager, manager. It's, there's all these different titles now in twenty twenty-five, and so it's better to say chapter executive instead. So that's one clarification, uh, intergovernmental agreements versus funding agreements. Now, like I said earlier, two thousand eleven. There were um amendments to what all of these things mean. Uh, so intergovernmental agreements in nineteen ninety-eight. Was different from the amendments in two thousand eleven, so. Funding agreements, um, let's say a Department of Energy grant. That's no longer considered an intergovernmental agreement, alright, so. Um, so chapters, um, you know, you can enter into these funding agreements without the B G S committee approval. That's the target. And that's what most chapters are doing, most chapters have, um, you know, uh. Army or engineer agreements, which are mostly funding agreements, they're technically not intergovernmental agreement. So when you have those differences and you explain those differences, um, you know, chapters, you have. The ability to do funding agreements. And, but you still need another committee approval for intergovernmental agreements. So, again, I think that's going to be some education, um, and. Intergovernmental agreements is like sharing of government powers, it's a public law. Three, six, thirty-eight contracts. Um, you know, those kind of things that that require N B P I T committee approval and now those. Those again would be uh distinguished and differentiated uh from the. Uh, funding agreements for the federal state government. Um, the uh president. Uh, clarified that the president calls all meetings. Except when the people decide on a certain day of the month. Alright, so today, the president uh has the power to call special and emergency chapter meetings. There's no clarity about, okay, what about more regular meetings and can planning be? Um, there are a few times where. The vice president and secretary treasurer doesn't agree with the president, and so they try to call their own meeting. Um, so there's no clarity, who calls the meetings, uh, so in. Uh, at least from the the DOJ's perspective, the president was elected as president, you know. If the vice president didn't run for presidency. Secretary treasurer didn't run for presidency, so the president should have that ability to call all many. You know, so that's primary, that should be very clear, and so we put that clearly in the law, except when the people. You know, say, uh, we want the meeting to be held on the first Sunday of the month. Uh, for planning and the third Monday, you know, the, you know, third Sunday of the month or, in that situation. That should also be allowed, and so in the law, we're making it very clear. General rule, president calls the meeting. Except. If the exception is when the people uh picks a certain day of the month, so we're making that clear, clarifying that. Another clarification is president declares a state of emergency. Alright, so, yes, the law says that president may, um. Yes, it's the president may uh take action to protect the lives uh and property of the community. Yes, it does say that, but. Under title two, only the commission on now, I mean, commission on emergency management has the ability to. Declare emergencies for entire now a nation or any portion thereof, that's what it says. Any portion thereof means chapters, so. But let's delegate that power officially to chapter presidents that can declare state. Of emergency, they don't have to wait for the commission on emergency management with. Um, to meet and and vote on on these terms, that's make it very clear in the law. That the ability to take action to protect the life and property. Of the chapter member membership includes the ability to declare state of emergency. Um, and then here's to uh the comment earlier about the, you know. What about the vice president, you know? Um, and sometimes, to me, it makes legal sense, if if the. And actually, it's in the law, the vice president. Um, uh, assists the president and secretary treasurer with their duties, it's very clear. But what sometimes happens is, no, the vice president said, no, I'm not going to take the meeting minutes. You know, that that's um, let's appoint a secretary pro tempore. And it's like, well, that doesn't make sense, what where are you, what are you going to do during the meeting, um, so. You know, in the absence of the secretary treasurer. The vice president should clearly view those kind of things, and and that's what we're clarifying in the law. Um, we're also going to prohibit pro tempore vice presidents, um. It actually, it's in the law already, the law already says pro tempore chairperson. And pro tempore secretary treasurer, so. The inference that there's no pro tempore vice president means. There's no pro tempore vice president, however, chapters, you know, they want something. In writing saying there's no such thing as a pro tempore vice president, a DOJ memo is not good enough. Therefore, let's put it in the law. You know, if, you know, because the chap, at a, at any chapter meeting, if you have a president there. They can run the meeting, you have the secretary treasurer there, they can make take the meeting minutes. You know, you don't necess, if the vice president's not there, they don't necessarily need to appoint a pro tempore vice president. Uh, so that's the point, um, and then. Uh, DOJ action, I mean, this is something we do already, but we're just going to put it in the law that. Everything that chapter officials put on their personal computers or. Um, on, you know, that is chapter business, that's chapter property. And we're, DOJ is going to file an action, um, to retrieve that property. Yeah, the normal things we do is we give a warning, basically, we issue a letter saying, hey, we're going to you, you know, can you please? Uh, bring back these items that the manager says you have or the president says you have, and can you bring these things back? Um, and then if that doesn't work, then we submit another letter saying, okay, you know, we issued this letter on this day. Uh, this is giving you a thirty-day notice that we're going to initiate or action. And and then so we we try to work with that process, but there's nothing that, you know, really says that we're going to do those things, gives them. Uh, heads up, so we're just going to make that very clear in the law that, you know, that's something we're doing already, but we're going to. Uh, put it in the law where you're, you're notified that we are going to do that. Uh, next, the ordinance process, it's so confusing, nobody understands it. Um, you know, it's it's. It's uh, and I'm being a little facetious there and, you know, I'm. Kidding a little bit, but it is, it it it's it's not clear, um. And so my proposal is to separate the ordinance process. From the referendum process, because both of them are combined under the current law right now. So, there's going to be a new A, that's going to be the ordinance process and a new B. Which will be the referendum process, and that works in conjunction with Title eleven. Um, because there's, there's some additional processes for referendum under Title eleven. Alright, so. And and then next, um, the club C, Canadian Land Use Planning Committee. Uh, the nineteen ninety-eight, um, LGA. It has some provisions there, like they, that the chapter has never created a club committee before. So I'm just removing those things because by now, you know, everybody's either had a club. And we have all these DOJ guidances as to how to restart. A club, if the, if 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 it's been dormant, you don't have it anymore. And you want to restart it, we have plenty of guidance on that, you know, already, you know, you don't. You don't really follow that Title twenty-six uh provision saying this is how you build brand-new club C. So, so that's what you'll see uh in the clarifications portion of both drafts, again. These are in both drafts, and most of these things, um, I feel like we have to keep. We have to keep all of these things in here, if we, if we want to move a few, if we want to remove a few things and change a few things, fine. But at the bare minimum, whether we choose model A, model B, or we create a model C. Well, I really need help here, I really need these things because it would help, um, uh, all of us. All of it would help all of our departments to, um, you know, perform their duties as to what the expectations. Are for chapters. Now, um, and this is uh kind of like a cartoon of how I felt like when. When regionalization failed. I was like, okay, um, do we change? Um, nobody like, likes changes sometimes, do we keep the status quo and we just bang our heads against the wall and allow? Is, you know, audit findings to continue, um, you know, how do you address all of these things and do we cheat? Um, non-LGA, government certified, do we treat them differently or not, and if we do, how does that work? In twenty twenty-five, so. You know, I, you know, that's why I'm here, um, I think that, you know, um. Some of the things that were raised by the auditor general's office earlier this year in presentations, they have some legitimate concerns. I feel like we need to at least have a common understanding, but the goals are. Um, and, you know, from my perspective, there's no government out there. In the world that is free from audit planning. Right, so, you know, what 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 we really need is. Um, staff and officials that follow the rules step by step. Hey, do I need three quotes here? I'm going to get three quotes. Uh, if if I get two quotes, am I just going to slide this, you know, and 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 then, you know, issue a contract? And and then subject myself to audit, I mean, you know, what 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 are the consequences of that? You shouldn't have stronger consequences. And and then subject myself to art, I mean, you know, what 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 are the consequences of that? You shouldn't have stronger consequences. For officials and staff who are not following the policies exactly. How they're supposed to be followed, you know, we should address sanctions. Um, and you know, maybe there, those are things that that might help. Address those kind of things, but we need something. We need some kind of change. Um, so I have several questions here, uh. Um, because if we don't like Model A and Model B, you know, give me a chance to work on Model C, you know, do we want? A hundred and ten go next certified chapters. From my perspective, there are a hundred and ten go next certified chapters. But if we don't want that, fine, you know, if we're going to keep. Non-LGA certified chapters. Then can I at least get them to contract for a ten thousand relics? You know, um, can they lease for ten thousand relics and they issue um. Fees for a hundred fifty dollars or less, you know, those are things that. Were allowing them to do anyway, you know, so let's. That's makes legal sense of what we're doing in twenty twenty five. Uh, continued supervision by subchapter officials or not. Um, you know, like I said, I had that slide talking about since nineteen seventy nine, there's just been issues after issues. Um, and there's all these kinds of micromanagement. Uh, bullying, um, all of these things that come into play, uh. And, you know, is is the chapter officials the right one to supervise the eight rules? Like the AFOs, is it the community? You know, these are some ideas I'm trying to throw out there. Uh, executive, uh, appointed, yes or no? Uh, you know, some might not like that idea. Um, to to appoint someone and have him serve pleasure of the community. You know, but the reason why I propose that is because some AFOs already have it. Rob the Gay is not creating this. It's it's I'm I'm looking at an AFO. And I'm saying, you know, let's roll this out to the other chapters and give it an option, let them decide. At the local level, how they're going to structure the oversight of the chapter section. Alright, um, next, do we really wanna add anti-bullying? Um, I know that's gonna be controversial. Uh, as well, however. You know, it it seems like if there's a law there, uh, it it would help police. Um, their actions, saying how there's these anti-bullying uh provisions at LGA, you know, um. You know, it it might help, um. With their conduct. Uh, they're alleged that, you know, so. That's just a suggestion. I'm not pulling this out of my, out of thin air. It's, there's uh comprehensive legal research. On how other jurisdictions apply uh bullying allegations. Alright, and then, uh, do we prohibit spouses and immediate relatives from serving within the same chapter? Um, again, these have raised uh conflicts of interest issues. Uh, sometimes, and it creates turmoil sometimes. Not all the time, you know, there are some good chapters, but I'm just saying, it does happen. Um, and so that's just a proposal. We can, we can allow, continue to allow that, or we can prohibit. You know, uh, decertification. For a thousand people, I don't know what that looks like. Um, how do you tell chapter, you're no longer a chapter? You're now a part of another chapter, um, you know, it's just. You know, it's just, uh, especially if you're part of the original eighty six. That never went through that requirement, you know, you were certified for. Fifty, sixty, seventy years and now was seven hundred, he's seventy five and. Anyway, but it is uh a discussion topic. I I think that needs to happen as well because it is. Um, there are several good reasons why. Um. You know, hundred and ten chapters, um. May not be working uh in twenty twenty five and well into the future. Uh, chapter option to regionalize. Again, last year's draft, Model A, it. Allowed chapters to initiate regionalization themselves. We took that out, uh, because it is controversial. Uh, it is different. From twenty sixteen and twenty sixteen. Regionalization would have been forced upon a hundred and ten chapters. Here. Under Model A, it would have, it would have, um. Empowered chapters to regionalize themselves. Under the um concepts and diagrams from the twenty sixteen effort. And so for now, it's not a part of either Model A or Model B, so, um, so anyway, that's a discussion point. Do we offer home rules to chapters now? And this is going back to the Office of National Government Development Memo. Uh, in nineteen ninety five. And I can tell you that they looked at Arizona. They looked at the the local political structures of Arizona. Um, and so they wanted to bring those kinda um concepts to the local at Navajo. Or chapters, you know, you know, that's. I I kinda think that's uh uh a longer discussion, uh, but I I introduced the. Idea here that, you know, do we wanna consider a Model C? And if we do, do we consider home rule? Um, you know, that's a question that, you know, could be discussed. And then there, obviously, there are other. Other considerations. That we can talk about if if Models A, Models B don't don't work. Um, but you know, that's. Uh, again, the point was to get done by noon and I just about did it. Because I know you guys have a uh special meeting this afternoon, and I wanted. Um, to give you all time to uh to to get over there and then also I I have, I tend to ramble a lot, so I could, again, I could talk all day about LGA. But I'll end it there, uh, Madam Chair.
The question, I appreciate that, Mr. Begay, not that we're trying to rush you out the door. It was just um a last minute special art, uh, Navigaia, that was um requested by Speaker Curly, so. Um. So with that, I believe, um, Vice Chair Johnson, you have a question?
Yeah. So. You know, I appreciate the, the question. I got all right, so. It's that it's gas for that. Not be all, I'll say here and ramble long, but um. Since I've been on council, I've been hearing this, uh. Um, rejection for the next couple of years for Navajo Nation budget. Find ways to supplement that loss to the NGSP body. Or not, or not. We don't have that type of revenue. So, do we have? You know. Enough to sustain a hundred and ten chapters? Do we have that revenue projection? Can you have that revenue projection? You know, for. Supplement these types of models, I mean, of revenue. So for if you are, the latest revenue projection on. The two thousand twenty seven. You know, we're gonna have to, uh. Impose, you know, visualization due to revenue. Um, loss or, you know, I have that same revenue to. Probably this chapter, so I'd care. Is your spot from. On the revenue. These chapters, these models.
Okay, I appreciate your question. And, um, Mr. Begay, with Vice Chair Johnson's question, having to. Uh, Navajo Nation to subsidize one hundred and ten chapters based off of a. Fifty fifty formula, when Navajo Nation, having been impacted in the last couple of years. In regards to, um, the fossil fuel industry enclosure, some of the mines. Um, impacted the overall uh revenue stream to Navajo Nations. And it is this committee's responsibility to try to. Uh, seek alternative revenue streams, whether it's renewable energy or. Even looking at maximizing right away renewal leases and whatnot, so. Uh, Vice Chair Johnson's question is, boy forward. You know, having to keep, um, and the way I look at it is. Uh, we're looking at one hundred and ten municipalities. And I believe the concept of the Local Governance Act was to have chapters start. Generating revenue themselves to be sustainable. Um, and not really looking towards Winter Rock's, um, annual, you know, um, allocations or appropriation. Things in one, and there's always that question with the chapters that are collecting sales tax. And when sales tax from the Navajo Nation are being um distributed to chap. Chapters like I think Tubac City is one of them, are they getting, um, more sales tax dollars or how does that work? See, these are a lot of questions and. In terms of subsidizing one hundred and ten chapters going forward, um. And as legal counsel looking at this, what are, what is your position on that as, um, honorable Vice Chair Johnson had asked? Thank you.
Good. Thank you for that question. Well, there's. Two thoughts, uh, one, as an advocate for local governance and maintaining the hundred and ten chapter system. I can tell you for a fact. This, um, discussion occurred before the LGA was passed. Um, and therefore, the belief by our leaders in the mid nineteen nineties was. We're going to give, provide enough tools. To chapters so that they become self-sufficient, so that they no longer have to depend on Winter Rock. And so they had the ability to uh enter into intergovernmental agreements. Um, which included funding agreements at that time, they can enter contracts, and so. Uh, they can uh be eligible for sales tax, um, and, you know, all revenues, they can, they have the ability to generate revenue. You know, they had this big idea that. You know, chapters similar to how outside governments operate local governments. They would be self-sustaining, um, and so. However. You know, at to a certain level. You know, again, again, uh, the LGA is is uh twenty seven years old this year. Um, we're not actually saying that happens, you know. And I feel like sometimes we don't give the LGA a chance to work. There's a lot of people saying, no, no, no. Um, to chapters. Um, you know, and maybe we need to change the attitude to say. Here's, here's how I can help you. Become self-sustaining, you know, what does that look like? Cause we're not doing it. I can tell you that, um, and so maybe if we gave them a chance, maybe that we wouldn't be in this situation. If we had a hundred and ten chapters that are LG certified, that are generating revenue from sales tax. And using all of those uh fundings appropriately, and they are, uh, again, becoming self-sustaining. That was the goal. That was the goal of the original LGA. So if we allow that goal to happen, then. The answer is they're not reliant. Um, we're not asking this question, is is the central government going to sustain a hundred and ten chapter governments? Uh, in the future, but today we are asking that question. So. That's why we're in this uh predicament to say that, okay, should we be served by chapters? Should we, you know, implement that certification process about a thousand people? Should we merge chapters? You know, and those things are tougher questions because the LGA hasn't worked yet. And so, so that's my second part of my answer is, you know, yes. Chapters should be autonomous and uh work towards the goal of being self-sufficient. They should be given that opportunity. But if they're not doing that. Then. It's very clear. With the budget streams and the budget projections, we cannot. Supplement. A hundred and ten chapter governments continuously the way we're doing right now, uh, for the, for the foreseeable future. This is not, you know, you don't see, you know, sa- state of Arizona. Uh, and New Mexico, they give some funding to local governments, but they don't. Completely sustain in the operation of the government, you know, they rely on them to be self-sustaining to a certain, to a certain level. That was the plan under LGA. And so, you know, I feel like, again, uh, yes. They should be sustaining, but. Um. I should for certain, you're, you're, you raise a legitimate. Um, concern that no. Winter up cannot sustain a hundred and ten chapter governments. If if Winter up is the one that has to supplement. The operations for a hundred and ten separate governments, so. Um, that's how I'll answer that question. And it's interesting that today, the Office of National Government Development is talking about. Uh, you know, reform. And that includes chapter reform. And, you know, for the audience out there, what I'm working on today, or, you know, what I I have been working on is not chapter reform. I'm just trying to fix. The LGA as it is, as it exists, uh, for the past seven years. Whereas the Office of National Government Development, they want to restructure. Um, chapter, that's chapter reform. It's kinda like regionalization, except it's a little different. And so they're doing a. Political session today, right, so, um, and they're talking about something else, whereas here. We are talking about something similar in terms of addressing the chapter issues, but from the standpoint that we already have the LGA. We just need to tweak it a little bit to make it work for us, at least in the near future. See revisit in a couple of years, see if we need more amendments, and so those are, um. I guess that's my response, uh, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Begay. So I'm glad, um, before I yield a time back over for follow-up to Vice Chair. Uh, I'm glad you brought that up with Navajo Government Development and their initiative. Um, they are, were at the museum from nine to eleven, and, um. I believe that now that they're sharing that concept. I wanted to invite them here to before Resources and Development Committee. And this, in in a similar setting in a work session. To get update information on what Mr. Harrison Soosi, his team. Have been sharing with constituents but haven't really brought it before leadership to date. So, um, that would be forthcoming, just depending on their availability. Uh, we'll have Mr. Harrison Soosi provide that as well. So, A, yeah, but I'll go ahead and you'll time back over to Vice Chair for follow-up.
Thank you for your, uh, response and, um. No, and that's something that, you know, in this. On leadership's, uh, table, you know, that. And not only the chapters, but our own, the Navajo Government. So, I know there's some chapters out there, very, you know, progressive and they're very, um. Determined to be, you know, self-sufficient. And I know Tubac City chapter, you know, they're doing. They're doing well, you know. As a certified chapter and. And I know another chapter, Shanto chapter, is another chapter that is trying. And, you know, late latest was the, uh. You know, the, uh, Business Side Leasing Authority, and, uh, no, I know they. You know, very proactive, you know, private find. Uh, the red light for that chapter to be self-sufficient. So I do agree that, you know. These tools need to be provided to the chapters, you know, and. I see that, um, you know. Now we need diversity to support them and. And moving forward. But I do think that we really need to take a look at the, uh, re- regionalization and merging chapters and. You know, as a, as an option too, you know, um, on the modules, because due to the revenue, you know, so. And, um, hmm, everybody, you know, wants, um. Youth centers, senior centers and everything like that in their community, but, you know, always that's a little sustained financially, so. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, uh Vice Chair, for that um recommendation. So now I'd like to go ahead and you'll time over to um honorable Claude.
Good morning and thank you. Thank you for bringing up the issues and I'm gonna be referring to the model C. And then some of the questions that you posed to the RDC. So uh one of the things I do want to bring up is in regards to external grants that the chapters are receiving. I think there does need to be a cohesive agreement between. The chapters as well as ASC and understanding. The MOAs or the MOUs in which these chapters go into contract. And the reason I bring it up is that for many years, um specific to Chinli Chapter. We've had the AmeriCorps Grant and these individuals maintain positions under the grant as administrators. And this past year, it was reviewed through our internal audit as well as with ASC. That the determination of these employees um not being considered Navajo Nation. Regular permanent positions. And so that has created some challenges for the chapter. Because these employees were accruing sick leave and annually. And Navajo Nation um again is not. Going to pay out those leaves because it's only considered temporary employment. So I think before we allow chapters to get into the capacity of managing external grants. I think there needs to be a specific provision included to where they understand their roles. When they're administering the grants and then also to double check with our Office of the Controller. And also with Office of Management and Budget because. For many years, um chapters have also had the shortfall of their positions. And then they've also gone into getting into like whatever their fun one, fun two. To cover the shortfall for these positions. And as you stated. We can no longer supplement the entirety of a chapter's budget. Which brings me to the next issue of Fund Management Plans for our chapter. Um I am interested in creating a fund management plan for. The chapter of Chinli and I know there's been other chapters that have expressed an interest. One of their interests is to also invest some of their funding so that they can create revenue. And we do understand they do have that opportunity and it has to be a low-risk investment. And so even that, uh I think that comes to your question. Is how do we get them to be all on one system, uh the finance management system. To where they're able to uh accept certain procurement, um as you stated. The need for them to enter into contracts, um purchases of ten thousand or less. And I think that's what this committee needs to decide on. Um and then going back to what you stated about the president may declare a state of emergency. Um I feel fifty fifty about that because I think. Um just thinking about some of these chapter officials. They are newly elected and they don't know their role within the government. They're still going through their training and they're being educated on the procurement as well as. How the budget works and so on. And so the idea of that also is that we do not have. The fine definitions of emergency. And we uh sit on the Commission of Emergency Management, uh Mister Manus back there as well as myself. And so even that, there's a threshold for FEMA reimbursement. And so even if the chapter president does declare an emergency on behalf of their constituents. There's no guarantee that they will get reimbursed because of the threshold limit. In addition to that, many chapters do not have the capability of setting up incident command centers. And using my chapter as another example, our chapter house is condemned. We have no place of where to host meetings, to host uh incident command if an emergency should happen. And so those are some of the issues that chapters are experiencing. So I think my recommendation would be that the president may declare a state of emergency. But that it be concurred by the Commission of Emergency Management. As they have the capability to offer uh. Getting resources to the chapter as well as with state and federal entities. Um another part that you brought up was the pro 10 for VP. And I think within that training, uh the Vice President. Also has that capability to fill in the role for a secretary treasurer. But how do we deal with individuals that refuse to do that role? I guess that's the question. And if we're talking about sanctions, I think that would be um. You know, how do we apply enforcement to officials who refuse to do their role? And I think those are some of the challenges and frustrations that a lot of communities are expressing. Because it does affect the operation of a chapter. If the individual that was elected to a position does not want to commit to doing. These that are otherwise assigned. And so that becomes an issue. So just to keep that in mind as well. And then also, we're talking about misuse and abuse of property. And this is pretty prevalent all across the Navajo Nation, especially in chapters. So if you could please um explain what the current process is to initiate white collar crimes. So that we can get better understanding of that. And then also, how can we also improve that process? Um there are individuals that knew well enough within their role. That they were taking funds that were not um. Privileged to them, but more were for services for the community. And as you stated, we're just doing warnings or we're letting them get away with that. And then you see these individuals uh regurgitate and they come back to the Navajo Nation government. They come back in their role as an elected leader or either as an employee. And so I think there needs to be a system where we hold these individuals accountable. So if I could just get clarification on that portion. And then um when my chapter went before. This committee as well as Budget and Finance, we heard from the Office of Auditor General. And during that time, Auditor General stated that she was in support of decertifying chapters. So at any point through the improvement of LGA. Did you ever consider the creation of a process to where. There would be a decertification for chapters? Um and I think we do need to clear the air with that because. I think people out in the communities as well as those that work with the Navajo Nation. They assume there is a process, but to my knowledge, there's not. And so I think this committee also needs to take a initiative to state. If they are in support of that or if they're not in support. And so I think we do need to address that as well. And then you did bring up the issue of government reform. And today there is a forum being conducted by Government Development. And I think that people really do need to understand um how that, you know, initiative that Mister. Um Harrison Sosi is taking uh will affect the chapters. Because part of that reform is, I believe, he's trying to go towards a constitution. And so that would alleviate some of our Navajo Nation codes. Title twenty six may be impacted as well as Title eleven of our elections. And then also other issues that um pertain to, of course, Navajo Bill of Rights. So I think uh I do support Madam Chair's recommendation to invite. My Government Development to come before RDC. And I just find it very comical. That this individual has not come before this committee when we are the oversight to the chapters. But yet Mister Sosi is out and about preaching about how wonderful this new government reform will be. When he has not even come before our chapters as well to get their input. And there's been no consultation with our local government and we're talking about home rule. But yet that's not being um utilized when these forums are being conducted. So that was what I wanted to bring up. And then also, again, just going back to our fund management plan. And how chapters are able to invest funds. And I think that. I don't know if there's um, if we can entertain a possibility. Of creating a pool where various chapters can all go in together to create an investment portfolio. But those are some of the things that I've been thinking about um as a delegate is how do we. Generate revenue for our chapters so that they can self-sustain. And also to have employees there that are able to provide services. Many chapters, they only have one or two individuals that run the entire chapter. Uh those chapters that are able to obtain grants, they're able to sustain. Other individuals to come in and assist with those services. But I think um that's always an issue. And one of the changes that we are also talking about. And that the Budget and Finance has brought it, is that every year for chapter's budgets. They do not do a budget form. And so the next recommendation. Um that I heard is that each chapter would have to submit their budget form. And that would have to come before the committees. And so that change is going to also be probably implemented the next coming year. And this committee as well as the council will need to prepare for that. And even now, ASC hasn't released some FY twenty twenty six budgets. Um speaking for my chapter, again, we have. And we're waiting for the RDP to be released. And so it's a long process. But I think even with that, uh we do need to be on one page. When it comes to the carryover budgets for chapters, how soon those are reviewed. And then also the FY twenty twenty six budget. And then the creation of those forms happens after the fact. And so it it makes it difficult for chapters to be accountable when um. You know, the process is kind of backwards. So those are just some of my comments. And if I could just get clarification, again, on the white collar crimes, the decertification. And then also um just the issues of. How we're going to address um the creation of maybe a fund management plan. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Again, I thank you, honorable Claude, for those um questions and also recommendations. I'd like to go ahead and you'll time back over to Mister Begay for response.
Madam Chair, do all of this. Um, three questions. Um the first one about um investments. Now, the five management system already allows the government to affect chapters to invest. And it has a procedure in there, which uh is probably, in my opinion, deficient. Um and so, one of the things that, uh you know, are. We benefited from one chapter's fit um. How do I put this in the best way? Um they invested money, they lost money. Um and therefore, it prompted us to uh. Create a procedure that was safe. And so what we did was uh the DOJ Tax and Finance Unit. Offered some uh proposals that would allow chapters to invest money. And so we incorporated those procedures. And by, and it was approved by the Investment Committee. So it at least gives um some high-level protections. To make sure they're um getting proper guidance as to, you know, options. Uh which is better than the what what's said in the five management system. And so. That has already done, have been done. And and there are um. Uh at least procedures now uh in the Investment Committee. Uh allows chapters those options. Uh and so that's uh I think. How we've addressed it. And you know, if if we wanted to allow chapters and to do that on their own. You know, I think we would need to develop procedures comprehensively. Just like our own Investment Committee has. I mean, they have detailed step by step. Um you know, and how they select certain uh investment portfolios uh that are safe. Um and so I think that, you know, if there was an adoption of that or um, you know, something similar. You know, I I feel like that's how we could um educate. And chapters to um do proper investment, um not just simply hire. And a consultant who has the potential of running away with money, chapters money. So. So that's how we've addressed it, at least in the interim, through the Investment Committee. Uh and then uh I can share with you what those, 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 I'll send it to by email, um what those procedures are. Um with regards to the uh uh declaration of a state of emergency. I can certainly um insert, you know, if that's the wishes of the, of the uh RDC. I can cer- and certainly insert the concurrence by the Commission of Emergency Management. You know, I uh earlier this year, one of the projects that we created that we finalized was a template. Chapter Emergency Management Plan. And that Emergency Management Plan starts with just weather-related emergencies. And those of us that are familiar with Emergency Management Plans, me, you know, there are multiple modules. That you can add, you can add one for active shooter, you know, you know, all these other modules that. You know, and and I feel like that should be done at the local level. You know, Chinli has a lot more resources than their neighbor, Bosley. You know, so and the chapters should be able to enter into agreements. For sharing of governmental resources in those types of situations. And so all of that is contemplated for. In that draft template Emergency Management Plan. And so. You know, at least we've tried to address it, it's not gonna fix everything. Um but I feel like. Once our chapters start educating themselves on these types of things, we can. Uh at least help facilitate their processing correctly of FEMA reimbursements. And they're not completely relying on me or ASC or anyone else to um process those things properly. So. You know, it would put power in their hands if they effectuated and created their own modules. Um because right now, the module that we created again is for weather-related emergency only. And I think then that's using all of the FEMA uh guidance. That's uh I think all of us uh never have went through those ICS. Uh trainings, you know, and it incorporates all of those things. And I feel like those are good tools, uh and we we tailored it for chapters. So. Again, I think that um education would help in that aspect. Um with regards to the refusal by uh officials to to perform their duties. Um you know, you brought up the Vice President um example, but this could be for all. Um chapter officials and, you know, um. I think one of the, one of the, my frustration is. I think one of the, one of the, my frustration is technically this goes to the ethics office. Alright, but there uh they all also have their plan restrictions. They have also their staffing restrictions. They also have to prioritize all of the ethics complaints that they receive. Now, if I and I have, I rock the gate, fill out one of those intake forms and say I strongly believe that this, there was a violation here. I don't know whether that's gonna see a lie today, you know, because of their uh of their limitations. Um there are some things that are criminal, yes. Alright, so yes, there is a referral process where I could get information from chapter staff, chapter official, A S C. They give me information that might lead to a criminal. Um you know, and so what might be, what I do is I turn that information and I give it over to the white collar prime unit uh for consideration. Now, it doesn't happen very often because the typically it's lax information. You know, there's only allegations. And I don't wanna bombard the white collar prime unit without some level of information. And sometimes that's, that's where the bottleneck is because they might not have access to, you know, evidence to show that, you know, certain um uh mismanaged funds are happening. Um and so that might um prohibit uh the forwarding. Or, you know, sometimes I do get some information and then I I forward that over to a white collar crime and say I think this is worth an investigation. Now, that's just an informal process. Um you know, one of the things that um former K G Ethel Branch um created in her first term was a public integrity task force. And a chapter unit was um um not actually, wasn't even um developing, but we had chapter um A D C B. They had art of general ethics and rules. We had delegates um and other other officials, uh even even in a township. Um be a part of that task force to address what is the process, you know, what if there's a F M S uh violation? What is the process there? What if it involves mismanaged funds? What should be the process? There should be a uniform process that everybody knows what the what those processes are. We developed a draft uh uh procedure. It's not perfect. But at least gets the conversation started and that happened under the public integrity task force. Uh and then she left um with the, and then she came back under the uh the new administration. And then she created the anti-corruption task force. Again, we invited the same um programs. And initially, in both efforts, you know, programs initially will show up. Um but you know, towards the end of both task forces, it was only D O J that showed up. Um and so, you know, can't I know everybody's busy, you know, everybody has, you know, their 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 priorities. But when we're trying to create these entities to address public um officials and public employees and their um conduct, you know, we create these entities to say what do, what does your program offer? What, how should we coordinate our efforts so that all these things are organized? You know, and we create these task force and then, you know, there's a either a loss of interest or, you know, we just get busy um doing other things and that's, that's completely understandable. But I feel like, you know, just to answer your question, there is a a a planning document that 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 shows some of these processes. And but I still feel like it needs more work. I feel like if we can reestablish the uh uh kind of task force and maybe it's from this body, I don't know, maybe more people will show up if R D C uh creates this task force, um but certainly the, is I'm not showing up when D O J establishes these things. But it's, it's the intent is how do we address these violations from the smallest of things? We shouldn't be able to address some of these violations. It shouldn't be all be handled and addressed by an object general. It's her, all she can do is implement recommend a cap, you know, and sanctions, that's it. You know, but you know, there are some real, you know, some violations out there uh that require investigations. Um and we need an investigator. And we need someone, uh if if they're not criminal in nature. If something can't be proven beyond a reasonable doubt, but it can be proven by clear convincing evidence. We should be able to file a civil, not a criminal, you know, but who's gonna take time and do all those things? Um you know, and those are questions we ask by the task force and I feel like those are legitimate questions that you're raising and concerns. And I think that if we had a group of individuals who really want to make this a priority, then I think we should, you know, put that together, that task force. Um the uh these sort of decertifying of chapters. Uh wanna make it clear, there's two certifications, one F M S certifications. Now, there's a nineteen ninety eight T C D C resolutions that says, hey, chapters once you become certified, you know, if you start violating these things with uh artists C, you know, this body can decertify. Now, there's never been a written process as to how that law. Um I could think of one, but there hasn't been something put in writing. That process is different from the certifications of a chapter. You know, what if we decertify Ching Lee chapter as a chapter? We merged them with Mosley. You know, there's a silly example, but I'm just giving a picture. How do you decertify Ching Lee? And you know, that I talked about that a little bit earlier is, you know, um through the example of Tubac City. Uh they're in A F O G. Uh A F O G is a L G A certified power. They have the power to tax. Um that's a L G A certified power. So when they decertify um you know, how would that operate? Um and oh, that's the F M S decertification. See, even even I get confused sometime. So let me back up. Section three, under title twenty six says you gotta have a thousand people. Uh you gotta have to parker P to allow members to uh access a chapter meeting and you gotta have it existed as a community for for continuous theaters. Alright, so that decertification process. I actually proposed one in one of the very first drafts of the original four models, actually drafted one. Um and I thought that would be so controversial uh that maybe we should think about that down the road. Let's concentrate on some of these things that we can accomplish today and then think about something down the road. And I feel like that's the uh kind of my same response to this idea of regionalization. I think regionalization is good, but maybe it's not part of today's effort. Maybe it's something we work on tomorrow. Uh kind of thing. Um and and so uh and then your uh the idea of each chapter's budget forms, I completely agree. The Eastern Avenue Agency Council completely agrees. Their plan of operation contemplates that they will be the forward budget finance committee to justify their own budgets, you know. And so that forward thinking about, you know, what, how chapter budgets and and to distinguish and get away from D C B handled budgets, you know, I think that's, that's a forward thinking. And you know, I think we have to develop that process at some point to be consistent with the Eastern Avenue Agency Council. So once the other agencies see, you know, see what Eastern agency is doing, I feel like they're gonna fall in place and they won't like that idea. Separately, we could uh develop a process. Um but you're saying, you know, just, just start it uh the next fiscal year. What does that look like? Uh because I always refer to chapter budget, uh I always say it's like uh making sausage, you know. We don't know exactly how, you know, how it's made, uh but it's eventually made. Um and you know, I feel like we should talk sidebar about the chapter budget process. I um on a personal level disagree with how it's processed today. Um you know, I think that well, just leave it at that. I want to put my foot in the mouth. I'll just say that I I agree that there should be different processes. Uh Madam Chair, that's my responses to all your questions.
Question. Thank you for that, uh Mister Begay, uh Chair. So so just to let you know colleagues, um especially now we can't hit, we'll be starting at thirteen minutes and this is um a decision that we need to um it's a decision we need to make today. And I just kind of listing out, you know, for colleagues on which model um they would accept now. This is just um some of the main key areas that um Mister Begay has been trying to uh put out these fires with chapters past, you know, years that he's been with D O J. So these are just like minor, small amendments and to really clarify where a lot of these gray areas um were. And going forward with some of the recommendation that Honorable Claw had brought up, even um uh Vice Chair looking at the regionalization concept that would have to be a bigger discussion with more stakeholders um involvement. So to not only Honorable Chair, so.
Just um one thing is that um earlier you alluded to the um uh regional councils. And uh they're incorporated through the particular legislation and you know, um the other chapters that are regional, so have the regional council are 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 already utilizing the or they plan together um as a as a district. And um you know, um I do agree, it's a way to get uh people to 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 work together, but at times they don't wanna play nice in the sandbox. No, and 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 I remember one of my conversations and I had a district three count uh um meeting. I just told my chapter official, be the bigger person here. Don't don't go on and um ran in and um uh talking trash about another chapter, things that, but just be the bigger person. I don't know uh where they're coming from, but um you know, this is a, it should have been a dialogue that had a bigger, a big, larger scale to do um some sort of um uh planning in the region. Well, the ship, but getting to that, you know, we have uh five or six regionalized um um communities out there that are operating based off of this particular resolution. Um you know, I think that's our um pilot project. And there was that that um uh a legislator, the the name of the legislation is about, talks about a pilot project. We today under the twenty third council, um a group came, came to the council to give a report on how it's working. And I think it was the region at that time. And they weren't playing nice in the sandbox. I don't know how it is now. But I think that, you know, we have not heard anything in writing to say, oh, this is really good. Or this is really bad. Uh word of mouth, other regions that I hear, they don't, uh some don't get along. Uh but they just go to the meeting to to meet. And uh I I believe there was a second issue too, and I think that was the the region. It's not incorporated into the chapter um uh budgets or whatever. So there was some clarity that needed to be brought forward for that. But I think that um you know at one point tribal leadership and their delegate. The the delegate from that region sponsored that resolution to have them regional council put in place. And that already shows that that support is already there. And uh from that time period to today, from that time period to today. We had none thirty report say today, you know, from NOS region. This is, this is the outcome of the uh regionalization or original council have been put in place by the Navalition Council. Oh, pretend to, you know, resolution number, you know, da 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 da, you know. And this is our findings. You know, this is the the positive, the pros of this, and this is the cons of it. And uh we have not heard that from them. So right now, I'm uh I I'm putting aside all the hearsay that I'm hearing from people, oh, we don't work. We don't work together or it's not working. I'm taking that as hearsay. So right now, today, I think that result, that pilot project or regionalization for those six, five regions that have been already authorized by the council is going well and splendid. They're flourishing and I think we should just go and drop a referendum on them. Force them into it. We have not heard a report from them. I believe um, you know, uh I I know the region has one. I know NOS, NOS region has one. I know that um district six over here and and I mean, little has one. And two other, I think was uh uh Slater's area too. And there's one more. There's one more. Um but I think that um we should just move forward to to uh drop, drop the resolution to um uh have the people ready. Because um we have not heard anything uh as a as a report to say, this is working well for us, or this is not working well for us. Don't don't eat side that. We hear individual cat, that chapter is cert at the local. That's different than the regional. So I think that um the objects, we need to look at that sense and look in, and you know, that's already concept that the uh districts are already meeting. You know, out there, the 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 other um I guess region that is not doesn't have that pilot project uh scenario. But um you know, you have one region uh uh about getting, roughly about five chapter resources. You know, and 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 are they really
So it's ready for
putting their funds together to plan for region, for original um such development for regional thing, you know, and and or is it just like the agency council. I think it's voices to this, voices of resources. If it was structured right to a point where they have roles or reform abilities. Where like transportation should be given to them so that they can work with their agencies to implement a uh transportation plan and things like that, you know, I support it. But I know agency council, is this a reporting mechanism? And you don't hear really the uh thing, it's just basic things, just like uh you know, oh, we're we're here, we're doing the study on um on uh health. And we just want your support. We, the agency council does not get a report, a final report from whether it's it's a student that's going to get their doctoral degree for their um um dissertation. Or if it's like from um a medical office, um um a a organization that's doing research. We don't get those reports. How will she get? We just, they just authorize it. Uh it they, then not much about um you know, their re- their own regional planning. Torn on in like like as as that for Western agency, you know, um look at your, uh you know, members of the um Look at your, uh you know, members of the um Resource Development Committee, look at your agency council. A resolution and see if there's important items on there, such as today. This is a, this is a work session, title twenty-six. We get things from, you know, issues from chapter to fix this for us, fix this for us. But at the local level, you know, what should we? Uh I feel that the H C council should have some roles, some reporting mechanism. If if they're gonna be incorporated into this so that it could provide us data here to the tribal government. So maybe it will help with funding um. Um 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 uh was it advertising? For fun, funding initiatives to to give out more monies for if, or appropriate more monies for um. Or when go to Washington to advocate, you know, uh not giving that 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 information. And um then when it comes to resolutions again, they just combine it all together and approve it with one motion. And go by Yakiyo, there's a ten resolutions on there, go stick it, you know, add it all together and. And 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 um approve it with that one vote. So all uh it will go uh on this question, uh then then as you're under, you know. On to um item C. Maybe you put that in there, or you know, that that portion can be implemented to A or B. You know, oh, uh there there is shit, thank you.
Uh yeah, thank you, uh Chair um Otto So for your um recommendations and comments that you made and. Um I'm not too sure if I really heard any questions in there, but let me go ahead and yield time back over to um Mister Begay.
Good man, Chair, though, uh delegate. So. Um those are, I I feel like I took all of those as suggestions and, you know, and I feel like. Uh those are good concepts that I feel like is something we discuss after these L G A amendments. Uh this time, the way I feel is we gotta take baby steps. Uh because, you know, regionalization, like I said, I incorporated that last year. And I feel like that's a lot of um commentary or receive. And feedback that I shall, maybe it would be controversial. Um or. The one thing I didn't contemplate before was a pilot project. Um do we add that to section four thousand? Uh in the draft of Model A, you know, that that's an idea. I don't know, you know, we could, it's certainly a discussion. Topic that we can think about, like I said, you know, I I'm proposing kind of models. A and B, I support A over B, uh but. If there's something that, you know, because it's not just R D C, right? We gotta get. Uh majority of council on board, um and then the president on board and then. And then we got to get these six chapters on board, you know, and so what would they be willing to accept? And when I see that uh from that perspective, it's like, okay, we gotta implement some of these things. To make sure that we're su- successful now. Um on the other hand, you brought another interesting point. What if we just drop regionalization again? Um you know, how successful would that be? And you know, I feel like, you know, the task force that I was a part of back in twenty sixteen. We did a few public hearing, a lot of public hearings, um and there was a lot of discussions about what that would look like. Um and so, you know, do we re, you know. Bring those back to the table and, you know, what the public hearing look like from that perspective and do we, do we go down that route? And I'm okay with that. What I'm also saying though is, what if it fails again? You know, and you know, I feel like we need a backup plan and I feel like. Models A or Model B, that's our backup plan. I feel that we need somewhere to restart. How we're moving with the L G A and if uh regionalization is something that is sparks interest and uh again. Then that can be a problem. I mean, that 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 can be discussed earlier at some point. So that that's um. That's my viewpoint, but I can certainly uh incorporate some of the suggestions that I get so sent.
Yeah, thank you, uh Mister Begay for. Number one, the presentation that you've provided, that pretty much um. The in-depth information in regards to where some of these are proposed amendments. And why some of these proposed amendments um are being proposed to Title Twenty-Six at this time. And um going back to, and and I've been contemplating, I've been on the fence about. Do we certify one hundred and ten chapters or do we leave it, leave the chapters as is? And the reason why I say this is looking at the historical trend. Certified chapters, right, legislations coming in and um Auditor General's report. Interim Auditor General's report, when Miss Helen Brown was in that capacity. You know, some of these certified chapters had two or third follow-up reviews, but technically there has been no effort. That these certified chapters have put forth to try to meet the um corrective action plan and fulfill it one hundred percent. So that's where the question comes in, like, okay. So when we certify these one hundred and ten chapters, you know, how is it gonna look? You know, how much more is it gonna become more uh chaotic than it currently is right now? But the good thing is that in your PowerPoint presentation, you provided some of the areas that will. At least uh assist in chap- uh with chapters in terms of guidance. Um when you, on your third to the last slide, you know, where you had um highlighted all the additions. That were going to be noted in the um Title Twenty-Six amendments. And a lot of the key areas that um or chapters have been. Uh requesting, I guess, um requests for services to DOJ. Those are the areas that you've pretty much um are just looking at to amend with this Title Twenty-Six. Now, um and one of the other areas too is uh because coming from working at the chapter level. And understanding and seeing some of the barriers and challenges that. You know, we were faced with. I honestly believe, and and then to talk about um. Uh uniform, everyone across the board utilizing the whole um same type of a structure. Um Model A, you know, addresses that issue, but the only area that I have a concern about is. I mean, are we setting up ourselves for failure if we certify all the one hundred and ten chapters now? Can we just leave it as is? But just um im- um implement all of the um recommended changes for Model A to all the chapters. Across the board rather than how you've showed in your matrix table that for non-certified chapters, we go Model B. Then then it's like over, over um more in-depth research that you have to do. Because of a lot of issues that come already to your desk. And that's what we're trying to alleviate. We're trying to make um your job, you know, a little bit more um easier rather than. Having to uh put additional um. Uh red tape to it again. So again, um the way I see these amendments, colleagues, is just to address. The issues um that have, um the chapters have been challenged with and not only that, but. You know, Naval Nation Department of Justice talking about, you know, uh how do we clarify this and? And um going forward, and I think the regionalization concept has been a talk of a lot of the uh chap. Uh delegates where I think that that would have to be a reconsideration. To take that particular approach and how it would look. And then uh we talk about the home rule concept. And I really think that when we're talking about decentralizing government back down to the chapter level. They should have that full capacity because right now, um. In a, you know, context of, you know, granting chapters at local governance authority. I think that Winderock is still holding on to a lot of that. And um and I don't know if there would be a. Period where we could at least allow that opportunity. I don't know if we call it task run or whatever. Uh just to see how our chapters are comfortable with this. Um because again, um my my worry is, you know, we give them this full authority, but. Uh I know now that there's tractors that don't adhere to the procurement policy. That don't adhere to personnel. Um um the the fiduciary responsibility. And um and and I don't want this R D C or council to be blamed by just making a premature decision. But, you know, I I look to you as legal counsel because again, I feel like you've um pretty much understood all of this and. Um and and then pretty much putting it in writing on paper and um. Share it here with us is great. And even to the alternative form of government. Maybe now's the time for that change, uh because right now having to. The uh three chapter officials and the way it's currently struck, structured or corn, I do see some tractors that um. That don't get corn and some chapters do get corn where it impacts the operations of like. What you stated is their carryover budget or even their operating budget. So. Um I'm very um open to the A F O G. And then anti-bullying, I really think that provision needs to be put in there. Why is because um. I've seen it. And I've heard it for myself visiting some tractors. And I know that some officials um literally raised their voices at chapter administration staff and vice versa. So I know that for Naval Nation employees, they're subject to the um department personnel um policies and procedures. But we need to impose something for the chapter officials. Because um right now we don't have anything in law and how that's gonna look in terms of um. Um like we have the table of penalties for the nomination employees, are we going to drop them like that for the chapter officials? And it's not gonna be removal or anything, but how does that, you know, look? And then the other area, the certified chapters, and this is a recommendation. You know, I'm really glad you brought this up earlier in your presentation. You did mention, how is that decertification gonna look? Prime example will look to Honorable Claus' chapter. You know, they know themselves to be certified. Now we're gonna yank it out from underneath them because they cannot fulfill their corrective action plan. And uh I think the example you gave, um. Now do we seek to withhold funds at least till such time that they? They get out of corrective action plan because it's not just this committee's concern. Budget and finance committees concerned about this too. So maybe if we can um impose that um. Uh provision in there. To where chapters have to fulfill the corrective action plan or um, you know. Lift themselves off of sanction and address it within a certain time that would be allotted to them. And I know that um, I think um a year is is sufficient time. But then again, it's the Office of the Auditor General's um schedule that we have to consider too because. You know, their staff there are always um working, trying to get audits completed and whatnot. So. I don't know if two years would be reasonable. So I I leave that to you. And maybe we can get an input from um Auditor General. We do have a representative here. So at the end of the day, as a leadership, I just want local autonomy and self-governance back down at the chapter alone. Give them the reins. We're gonna come back and drop another legislation. This was a bad idea. But I'm for Model A, to be honest with you colleagues. Because I read the information um uh over the weekend and again early this morning. And I looked at the amendments um per Title Twenty-Six that is attached to the um uh email that Peggy sent us. And um everything is self-explanatory and I really think it will give a clear direction for chapters. Even like the rules of order for chapter means and how that needs to be run. So I think a lot of the areas that have been gray areas are now going to be addressed, at least. During this interim time until such time leadership looks at a more thorough reform concept. So let me go ahead and yield time over to um Chair So, and then I'd like to get Auditor General's um input on. Um the models that were shared here today. Chair?
Yes, uh just just one more area, I think that um, you know, um. At what point, I'm gonna refer to what I always say, it's like at your own household. Hmm, uh when you talk to your children and they don't listen to you and you keep repeating, don't do this. I don't intend it. I see a smile there and you know what I'm talking about. And and um. Sit there and say, don't do this, you have to do this. And. You start raising their voice gradually and then at some point you have to, you have to be be strict. And that concept, when do we? Do that to the chapters? The chapters, the every year when we appropriate monies to the chapter, it's off of their chapter trust fund. And that income that comes off of that, a fifty-fifty formula. That's out of directly out of the chapter trust fund. And that's what, that's how the appropriation uh is is done to the chapters. And I think that if we, we put down and implement um um laps on there. If they're in the in the audit setting, the things like that, automatically you apply laps. That way, at the end of the year, what was appropriated to them, they don't expend it, they lapse it. It laps back to the trust fund so that trust fund can work and generate more monies for the next. Cycle of uh of 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 the the next year's cycle for funding appropriation. Then the other is that maybe also, you know, we withhold fifty percent of the funding. That goes to the chapter. Because if you don't. If you don't do that, oh, don't give us the money. They're gonna give it to us. And you have chapters that are that are sanctioned and or or in 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 audit status. And their next phase is sanctioned. And if they don't get get out of that, you know, there's chapters that probably have been sanctioned two, three times. When do you move to de-certain um decommission those chapters? And you combine them to the nearest um 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 certified chapter. Within their region, you know, within their delegate region. And it has to have some sort of consequences. Because I did all all the top it finish. And and I think I may be going over. Other laws that needs to be uh implemented and so forth, but. This is, that's just a thought. At some point, we have to put our feet down and uh so when do we say enough is enough? Because all these audits and things like that are costing the nation and it's impacting our boundary. It's impacting our boundary. When the nation wants to borrow some money, things like that, you know, it it impacts. So, oh, uh, thank you.
I appreciate that um recommendation on Chair. So with that, I um. I think Mister Begay has been taking, you know, notations on that as to what would be most feasible. Approach. And I really think that we need to hold A S C accountable. Because technically, they're the technical assistance department to these chapters. It hopes that they guide the chapters through the corrective action plan and try to get um. Revisited um as soon as possible to prevent them from getting sanctioned. So I don't know if this would be provision that we would have to um add to the A S C's plan of operation. Um but that's just another um. Uh suggestion based off of what was shared because that's one of the biggest areas that. Um I think is a big concern for us as a, this committee, having all these chapters come before us. And um looking at the repetitive um audit findings and it just seems to be. And um, looking at the repetitive um, audit findings and it just seems to be. You know, um, just almost the similar issues across the board for all chapters that had come to this, before this committee thus far, so. I just find Mr. McGee, if you don't mind, I'd like to get um, Office of the Auditor General some input. Um, and then just please state your name for the record, thank you.
Yeah, day, um, good afternoon, uh, my name is Alfi Deli, with the Office of the Auditor General, Senior Auditor. And I appreciate the opportunity to um, uh, join in the discussion, we are also here with. Our other colleagues who are also listening um, to this presentation. Um, unfortunately, our, our A G is at the Billy Budget and Finance Committee meeting right now. Uh, so um, in regards to um, the discussion here today, our part in this whole um, law. Is to basically certify, review the chapter's accounting system. And uh, recommend sort of certification to, to this committee and we have over the years since um. Since it was T C B C to now and more recently, um, chapters have stopped long. You know, requesting certification, um, uh, there's one uh, that came close, which was Crown Point Chapter. Uh, but they, they, they're going back to the drawing board to hopefully come to this committee to ask for certification. Uh, more recently, um, we have had certified chapters audited, um. And we're finding that um. They're not abiding by their, by management system and when we certify a chapter. Uh, we're saying that they're, you know, they're abiding by policies and procedures, abiding by the laws, their accounting system is good. Which they sort of achieved at one point, but now, um, a lot of the certified chapters have, have, you know. They're basically operating like the other chapters are, um, law findings. Um, not getting their um, audits done, financial statement audits done. And when we do do an audit like um, on certified chapters, we're not auditing necessarily uh, doing the financial statement audit. We're doing again, policies, procedures, um, laws and so forth. But one key uh, component out of this, um, I understand, um, the revisions to um, the law will improve. Areas that Mr. McGee pointed out. But in artwork, uh, we're trying to, we're, we're using the five management system. Whatever, whatever version the chapter is using and we're finding that, um, if there were revisions to the. Those policies and procedures, then it would make it um, newer, it would make um. The uh, chapter more accountable and more clear in the work that they do. And I understand a lot of the um, discussion here is in regards to how do we. Make um, these chapters be more accountable and again, uh, for our office, we look to the A S C to assist. With that and we're finding that, um, and a lot of more recent audits that we're, we're working on, that's not the case. So um, I was hoping that A S C would be here to, I know, joining them on the discussion. But we're finding uh, that uh, you know, the A S C is struggling to. Uh, provide technical assistance to uh, many of the chapters out there that need it and. Um, I, I always feel that um, training uh, would be very important to chapters and. I'm not sure why um, this isn't online accessible to chapters to. You know, do the simplest thing, um, as far as like, how do we do a, you know, this catch and see process, I'm not sure why it's not online. To really uh, have these chapters access it and be aware all the time of, of what the process is. So in our work, we, we work with what is there and then I know that um. The A G has been in discussion with Mr. McGee on some areas. But um, I just appreciate the discussion and I think this is a starting point. And um, I think that more discussions um, should, should be in order because um, right now, you know, um. The impact to uh, all of this is the people, you know, um, are they getting the services that they, that they need and. And we, we definitely don't want to um, uh, you know, penalize the people. Because it's actually the, you know, the staff and that official that's supposed to be implementing this process to. Make sure that the services are received by the people. But um, I appreciate the discussion and I will let um, um, Jenny know. What we discussed here today and I, and I hope to, you know, be here again to uh, you know, move ourselves. Forward so that we, in our work, we're not continuing to come here to talk about all the findings um. That are out there still and thank you.
I appreciate your response and input in regards to the discussion here today. So if it uh. Uh, model A or B, because technically these are just like minor um. Amendments that need to be made to guide chapters again. And um, again, you know, that was shared in the PowerPoint that was provided, but. On the, on a bigger scale of amendments, those are the areas that um. I truly believe would have to be forthcoming and that's probably going to involve a chapter reform discussion. So um, so right now, um, I know that um. The amendments were provided to this committee in regards to the very um. Issues of the topics that um, Mr. McGee had brought here before us and I think it would be. You know, allowing that authority to go back down to the local level and um. Having them exercise it because technically, i- in a way, even for a non-certified chapter, thinking back to Rock Springs. We were essentially already almost doing that, but we weren't certified and. The chapters didn't want to get certified back then, so I just left it. So with that, um. Uh, what is your input in regards to, let me just put this out there like. Getting all the one hundred and ten chapter certified versus just keeping as is with the forty five certified and sixty five not.
Thinking about um, this, just being my opinion, but um, thinking about the chapters. And the certified chapters, um, I don't think that certifying all the chapters. Would, it, to me, it's just, they're already operating under. By management system policies and procedures, I think what Mr. um, McGee discussed is more like really um, more um. Detailed issues in regards to the law, uh, especially having to do with like um. Like the other areas in there like land, those type of. Uh, in, in, in my, to me, certification is um. If we were to fully certify everybody, to me, it's just a, a, a process to help them more with those issues. But um, it's not helping as far as like um. Whether they're implementing the by management system policies and procedures and you need. Uh, that's to me, the policies and procedures are the, the base level foundation of. How you handle operations of the chapter and if you can't do simply that. How are you going to, you know, how are you going to handle the rest of it? So I don't, I don't think that uh, certifying that all the chapters is. Um, be beneficial. Um, and I think that um, what Mr. Um, McGee is referring to some really specific issues in regards to land, um. Is there a way to change the law to just do just that without going A? You know, I'm, I'm, I'm mostly going to like C because a lot of those issues are. Uh, term internal control issues that can be handled um, uh, with a change to the law. And I'm not sure if I answered your question, but I don't agree with certifying the chapters. And that's just.
But was she? I appreciate your um, input and feedback on that and um. And again, you know, this is a very tough decision because I'm sitting here thinking about my other colleagues, what is their position? Because I don't know, um, in terms of the chapters that they represent within their delegate region district. Um, how, you know, um, how the, their chapters are in terms of operation. You know, and um, I look at my, uh, you know, my chapters and that's one area that I've been just contemplating is um. Uh, certifying one hundred and ten chapters, you know, are, are we really ready for it, so? Um, but I think uh, with the inputs that was made here, uh, Mr. McGee. I, and I really wish that Mr. Charlie was here, I did invite him. As I seen him last week and I asked him that I need your presence here because you're the department manager for A S C and. Um, and the reason why uh, I bring this up is because um, visiting chapters out there. Uh, there's a. The conveying of information on certain things is not accurate across the board. You got one A S C saying something over here, then you have another A S C saying something over here. It's not consistent. So I think that's where the, the, the barrier or the gap is right now and I just thought that. Okay, with either model A and B right now, to address those very issues would be the way to go. For the time being until such time that we really dive deeper into this issue of. How are we going to restructure the chapter? And again, I, I uh, agree with you because. If you go to some chapters, A S C is not present there, to be honest with you. And they're supposed to be the technical, you know, assistance in the good um, team. To provide those guidance or even just to monitor where you at with these stuff, but. Uh, uh, see, that's the big gap too and I um. And um, I can't really, you know, uh, so I don't know in, in terms of. A S C being a part of this picture, that's the reason why we have some of these. You know, um, existing issues which would be addressed in the. Um, in the interim, so again, I'm, I'd like to circle back around with my colleagues here, but um. Mr. McGee with some of the recommendations that were noted here. Um, and also just, you know, recommendation from Auditor General's office, um. I'd like to see if you can, you know, craft that into the existing. And, and I'll get back. B and leave the chapters as is, like with the forty five certified and. The sixty five not certified, but looking at the option of um. Withholding funds like Chair So said, if they don't meet their cap or sanction um, timeline requirements. So I think that's one of the areas that we really need to get stern on because right now. I honestly, wholeheartedly believe you because um. Just having certified chapters come back and they're not making no effort to try to address it, so um. But at the end of the day, we wanted to have everyone just operate on a uniform platform as well. Um, so, because right now I know that Mr. McGee has to pull certain procurements for certain chapters when they were certified and non-certified. And so all the um, timelines of when some of these chapters were certified versus non-certified. You know, he has to remember, okay, this is the procurement that I have to use or this is the F M S that I have to refer to to make a response. And to, to assist them as well, those would be the areas, so. Again, I really think there still has to be a lot of education, you just mentioned the resources that chapter staff need. Because they go to I T G for training, like literally every year or when. A new module is being added, they have trainings on that. So they should have a resource manual or like you said, a video. For a new person that comes in that can just automatically go through the tutorial and oh, this is how you do it. But right now it has to take the A S C staff to literally sit there in person trying to um. Go through the modules or show the new um, account maintenance specialist or the A A, you know, how to navigate to the M I P system. So um, but I really think that these are the discussions and some of the concerns that we need to also share with A S C. So with that, um. I don't know how long it's going to take you, Mr. McGee, to add some of these recommendations. And I'll circle, again, circle back around my colleagues and just get a general understanding, you know, as a model A or B. But also taking auditor general's recommendation as well. So in terms of timeline, uh, can you give him the mic laugh?
Thank you. Okay, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, it's not going to take me very long with the draft, I think the purpose of the work session uh, partially was to get the. Get updated information, um, because I know we were contemplating public hearings. And I just wanted to um. I guess reintroduce both models, um, there's no more four models, it is just two models now. Uh, so that we're all saying the same thing, um, and we all understand these bo- these models and, you know, what I'm. He's hearing, um. Is there's a lot of support for model A, uh, but at the central government level. Um, you know, I think there's a lot of concerns with model A, uh, and so that's why I created model B. You know, uh, maybe we should certify uh, all the chapters and so that's why model B is there. Um, however, we do have to make legal. Um, I guess, uh, justifications for how chapters operate in twenty twenty five, so that's why. Of the is there uh, as a proposal and like I said, you know, in the slides. Those two models, there's very, there's only a few sections that are really different. Otherwise, everything else is pretty much the same and I feel like. If anything, I really would like those things that are consistent and the same um, to go forward. Um, so if we want to leave it as is and uh, just not rock the boat as much, then maybe model B. However, you know, one of the things I was um, that I'm thinking about is what if it gets vetoed? Is it vetoes, do we have enough support to override that veto um, for model B and so. You, you know, that's um, for the discussions that we, you know, because to me, like I said, I favor model A, but. I can understand why there's apprehension for model A and, you know, that's why I created model B, I wouldn't have created model B if. If that was not something that we would support uh, at D O J, you know, it's something that. Uh, we're giving options and we're trying to educate these options, I've been doing it at, at, at agency. Uh, councils, I've been going at uh, A S C level presentations, probably invite chapters and. And I feel like, you know, those kind of education efforts, as long as we're on the same page as to how we're going to move forward and justifications for. Choosing one of the models and maybe we move forward and concentrate with one model uh, now or. Do we just, okay, let, let's talk about these things in public hearings in January, February. And maybe we get clear direction for the people, um, that's another idea, uh, so. You know, I'm really flexible as I know we're moving forward and if we're going to do a model C. For the public hearings, um, that will definitely be ready before that, uh, and so. I can again, take all of these uh, into consideration, uh. Recommend some provisions, see what it looks like so that you see the, so you see it in writing and then we say, okay. Do we like how that looks? No, you know, and, and modifies some of those things, so. Uh, it's not going to, again, take me very long, I could be done by the end of the year on a lot of these things and probably even before then, but. Because of the holidays, you know, we. Uh, I'm just saying, I, it's not going to take me very long to incorporate some of these suggestions.
I appreciate that, thank you, so uh, we do plan on uh, going forward and I think that would be the best approach. As a public hearings. And um, we're looking at rescheduling those public hearings in January. And um, so um, we need to try to put out as much um. Advertisement out there so that we would have a higher volume of people that would show up and get, you know, um. Just possibly some input if they could just put it on some sort of a um, uh, a form as to. You know, which model that they, you know, uh, choose to uh, see would be most um, suitable for the chapter. So just getting their input because again, at the end of the day, we also need. So just getting their input, because again, at the end of the day, we also need those fifty six chapters, right? I mean, chapter resolutions to actually, you know, um go into um effect and then have that rollover. Um um or that will wrap for this um initiative that we're trying to accomplish here. And I really want to get this done by the end of um next year. At least for us to have something in place. And I know that um in the interim, you know, we still have chapters that still need. Some of that guidance from you or you put that out here before this committee. So that's what we'll work on, but just. Let us know. We'll go ahead and um reach out to share those dates and then the venue locations. For those public hearings that are going to be scheduled. So it's able to tell us, yeah, Mr. McGee, I know this is a lot of work. I know that you've also been wanting to hurdle the, oh, um hurdle this over the finish line and. On the flaggy, it's on these mass and then kind of just pulling some back out. But I just want to commend you for all the um hard work and the efforts that's gone, you know, um that's been put forth. You know, in developing these uh models again here before us as to what. You think would be best and suitable for chapters to utilize going forward. But again, we are here and um, which is some of the recommendation from colleagues as they see through their lens as concerns is also valid. Enough for me to say, okay, let's try to see what we can craft, you know, uh together again. So. It it's a and um so once the public hearings are done, then um compiling up the information. That should give us a um good um, you know, determination for this committee to go forward with whichever model and. Adainda will go ahead and re-drop that legislation. So let's try to shoot for. If not the end of March, then maybe early part of February for that legislation. Then we'll have a Title Twenty Six Amendments Party once President signs, signs it into law. How was she? So again, I just want to thank um, you know, Office of the Auditor General, Miss Lee, for being here. And then. I know two young gentlemen, you're from Auditor General's office too, right? Yeah, thank you for being here and listening. You're our next leaders, so you'll be in our seat here in a couple of years, right?
Yeah.
And then to ASC to the city, yeah, thank you for coming out to the other staff. I don't know if you're with chapters and also Mr. Sochi, thank you for being here. And then also to our listeners on the call, so that would be the next steps. Then do you have anything else, colleagues, Dennis? How was she? I think um. We've heard, we've heard this and now um hopefully we have a set plan to actually take this forward and truly make those amendments, Mr. McGee and. And I know that you've been wanting to seek retirement after that, so. How was she? So that will conclude our work session here this afternoon. And um everyone have a happy Thanksgiving. It will be two days. And you all be safe out there with your loved ones and your children as well, grandkids. And um we'll be talking to you soon, this coming Monday, December first, for our regular RDC meeting. Thank you.
Okay.